20th, 2020, meeting of the Merrimack School Board for the purpose of our board budget meetings. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I just want to have one announcement that student representative Johanna Caroma is excused from tonight's meeting. She studied so hard she got sick and gave herself the flu, so I hope she feels better and bounces back in time for midterms. The next item is public participation. Anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Scott Adler, representing Merrimack Concerned Taxpayers. My address is 3 Deerwood Drive here in Merrimack. While I realize this is going to be a one-way conversation, I'm hoping at some point in time this evening that you can address this. Throughout the last set of budget meetings that I've been participating in, I've noticed that some conversation occurred where I was under the impression that the roofing was done. So I'm hoping that you guys can explain why we've got roofing in for capital expenditure. And I would like to understand more about why there is a redesign study for $100,000 that's necessary as well. So I'm hoping that at some point in time tonight, you guys can address that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on their public participation? Seeing none, we will close public participation and we will go on to item number four, which is proposed warrant articles. So it is listed as me, but I'm going to defer because I don't have any warrant articles in front of me.
So I think that we were gonna, I, my, so perhaps we worded that wrong. I was hoping that the, or thinking that the discussion tonight would be whether or not the board wished to have the JMU's roof be placed in a warrant article.
Okay.
If I should have prepared something different.
Not at all. I think that's totally fair. So if there's anything that was like housekeeping, I wasn't aware of. Sometimes we have those. So warrant articles we know that will be on the ballot are Article One, which is the election of officers, which obviously is school board, school planning and building committee, budget committee. So those are the, those positions that would be up for election. And the second thing that would be guaranteed to the warrant would be the budget. So up to and including, there's usually an article to follow that, that if you wanted to have a special meeting, if the budget did not pass, that special meeting could be called. And okay, I'm trying to play poker with you right now. Trying to figure out what you're gonna ask next.
Can I?
Yeah, please do.
Let me, let me, let me clarify.
And then the acceptance of gifts and
Yeah, the acceptance of gifts, of real property, like land.
And those are standard on every ballot and we will go over those when they are reviewed by the DRA and ready for publish.
So two, the two items that are in the operating budget, if you're looking at your capital improvement plan right here, are the master plan study. As you recall, the master plan study was to commission a study, an architectural and engineering study of the entire Master Cola complex, including but not limited to the high school, the buildings in the high school complex, the current configuration of the parking at the high school, the utilization of existing land that may or may not become available during that process, and then lighting. So it's total, it's a total design engineering study to see what's the best utilization of the space. It's been configured that way for a number of years and I don't think it's probably utilized as optimal as it should be. You recall when we did the parking lot at Master Cola Elementary School, that that was Steve Keach came before you as engineer, owner of Keach Nordstrom. And he reconfigured that parking lot, added additional lighting, and we gained around 20, 30 parking spaces out of that. So this is not to construct anything, it's to get some options before you as far as the plan goes for the high school complex and perhaps going down O'Garret Drive also. So that is in the operating budget, so it's not part of the warrant article discussions. The bleachers in the Smith Gym, that is not in the warrant, in the operating budget, so it's part of your warrant article discussion. The window replacement for the high school, the 265,000, that is included in the operating budget. And the Brentwood site clearing is included in the operating budget also. So you're just looking at two items, three items. Roofing at Master Cola Elementary School for 655-805, the bleachers in the Smith Gym, and the, and that's it basically. Bleachers in the Smith Gym and the roofing.
Okay. So when it comes to those, we have taken those items in the last few years that we find are important but not mission critical to operate the district, where we still feel that we are not at risk, especially when we're looking at this roofing. That would definitely be one where if it was about to, the membrane was perforated and we would have had water coming through into the building, we would not have considered putting it on, on a warrant or even delaying it. But right now, based on the inspections that we have and on the recommendation of Facilities Director Tom Toozeo, it's something that we need to maintain, but it's not to the point of being mission critical to, to replace at this moment. So we can last the next school year with, with that roofing.
Just to reinforce that, this year we hired, we actually hired the same roofing engineer that Bedford School District uses because he came highly recommended. And so he walked this entire section. They did some core samples to check on the insulation value and everything like that. And we're going, we're going forward with the bid specification and we're kind of probably, you know, regardless of, you know, if the board chooses to put this on a warrant or not, we're still going to have some sort of specification that we can hit the ground running with at a future date. But even, he says, looking at it, it isn't one that has reached the point of criticality where it's going to fail, where we're going to have buckets in the classroom. The only thing we need to do is some of the core samples we, we have, we've patched those up. But we may want to just for a few thousand dollars out of the operating budget, come and do a repatch job on those before anything else, but it's, it's fine right now.
Okay. And if you wouldn't mind, just on behalf of the board, to thank Bedford for their collaboration and recommendation.
Yeah, it was nice. We talk to them all the time.
Absolutely. And we appreciate the collaboration.
Yes.
Are there any questions on the roofing? I see three, so I'm gonna go Brandy because she was quick, and then Andy, and then we'll go to Cindy.
So relative to the roofing, if we were to hold off, do, can you give us an update as to what the roofs look like for Thorntons as well as pushing out into 23 and 24 for JMU's and MES? What, if we were to push it out, I just wouldn't want to have that hit us for multiple schools in one budget. So I just want to make sure that if we were to push this back or even put it as a warrant, that then next year or the following year, when we're looking at Thorntons, that we're in a good space to not have a total of 1.6, 1.7 hitting us.
Right. But before I let Matt answer, I forgot to mention, there are materials on the table that include our, our capital improvement plan and our bonded debt schedule, if anyone from the public wanted to grab them. So, sorry about that. Matt, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so to answer your question, the, the roofing consultant walked with Tom and looked at these roofs that we have identified. And if you, if the board chose not to do this, this year, I would not expect this roof to be stacked on top of the Thornton's Ferry project. I would expect everything to just slide one year.
Okay. Andy, you were next. Are the questions answered? Good. Okay. Andy, you're next.
So it's mostly a comment. I mean, Brandy did ask the question I was gonna ask to make sure. Because I know that this roof was originally in last year's when we started discussing roofs and it was removed. And I know based on our past experience that roofing, when it starts to go, it starts to go. So the question, which you answered is, if all these roofing projects that are here are stable enough so that they can withstand sort of this redirection by another year, that's good to understand. The general comment, Mr. Adler asked the question going in at the beginning. I just thought I'd give a little color on this. Then, how many acres of roof do we have total?
Over 11.
11. 11 acres of roof in the whole district. And we started a project, what, 15 years ago, 10 years ago?
Correct.
To replace the roofs with 35 to 40-year warranty roofs across the district. And it was a multi-year, really long project. These, 1, 2, 3, 6 remaining projects are the last ones that remain. If you look at the, this big sheet, so people at home, hopefully we're gonna put this on the website so people can see it.
Oh, sure.
The, the bonded debt schedule, it goes out through 2049, 2050. You can see after 25, 26, the roofs stop. And that's when we have achieved completeness of replacing all of our roofs in the district with roofs that have 35 to 40-year warranties and we're out of the roof replacement business, so to speak. So we do still have this, this period that we've got to do this over the next several years. And the challenge this board battles with, as we have for the past 10, is what's the most critical? And do we have to do it this year? And are we maintaining the infrastructure of our quality of our, of our district? So that's the rationale behind those six roofing projects that remain. And it's sort of the last real large maintenance objects that we have, so. Thanks.
Thank you. So on that, if we feel, we have, you know, if we feel we want to put this as a warrant article, because it's, it's not in our operating budget, but we feel that's something that will keep us on track. But we are not in a position where it's, we have to make the decision as the board because it is mission critical to not compromise operations, we can do that. If it's not put in a warrant article, this will automatically have to be deferred. So, or we'd have to add it to the budget in our, in our deliberations, which is, I think, based on what we've gone through this, this year, is not something I would necessarily support. So on that note, I think, Cindy, you had your, so I'm sorry, I think I almost forgot to do that, so.
No, I was, my point is just that, you know, if we are, it was partly Brandy's question of if we push one back, can we continue to do that? Which, if we can and we feel comfortable and Tom feels comfortable, we can do that. I'm more in favor of doing that from the standpoint of moving it closer to when our bonded debt is gone to help keep that consistency in the tax rate. So I would, you know, if there's, there's no reason to do it this year, I'd, I'd rather push it if we can push everything back one year. But, I mean, the point is too, if it's something that's really critical and we're at a high risk of buckets in the hallway, because when my kids first started in the district, there were buckets at Reed's Ferry. I saw them, water dripping in them. And over time, these have been fixed. I haven't seen that. So if we're at risk of that, a high risk of that, if there's a very minimal risk, that's one thing. But if we're at a high risk of that, then I would not be in favor of deferring everything a year. Then I would say, let's stick with the plan.
Mark, absolutely.
So I just want to kind of reiterate a lot of the sentiment that's been expressed by the board. So to Vice Chair Gualeumi's point, it is not, it is not in imminent risk. Now, having said that, you know, anything can happen. And I think that Tom, and I want to just be careful because Tom is so good at trying to give us good advice. And I think he worries that if he says unequivocally nothing will happen and then life happens, that, you know, I want to make sure that I represent him appropriately. Tom is brutally honest and he walks and he inspects and he's careful. So there is, and that's the reason that we felt confident to not include it in the budget. But, but now the flip side of that is that this board, you know, has frequently reminded us that we want to, you know, maintain our infrastructure. And so similarly, we didn't want to take the opportunity from the community, let's say, to, you know, to not have the chance to consider it. And so I just wanted to kind of, I think it's obvious, but I just wanted to, for those listening, why it is that was the decision, why we didn't include it in the budget, because like everybody, we have to make choices. But also because the board has been consistent in reminding us to stay faithful and the fact that our buildings are in the condition they're in is because the board has stayed faithful to those, you know, conceptually and practically to those goals. So that was kind of the rationale for why we presented it to the board the way we did.
Definitely. And I think Naomi, and then Andy.
So the discussion that would be helpful to me on this one has to do with revisiting the other roofs in that I'm a pretty strong proponent for maintenance, deferred maintenance as the way to go. And I recognize we can certainly do a reasonably accurate prediction of next year's roofs or maybe two years out, but if we're shifting everything, we're talking about shifting it five years, six years down the line, that's a much further out prediction for those roofs. And I'd like to, if there's a way to get a sense, is that part of your conversation about where the roofs stand? Are those last ones on the list?
Yes, correct. That it's acceptable to do that. And someone had made the, made the point referencing the bonded debt schedule. I think it was Cindy, right? That next year is, or next year is the last year of the high school addition that was done in 2001, 2002, I believe. That was like a 20-year bond for a $6 million project, which is just unheard of, but it was a 20-year bond for $6 million. So last, next year is the last payment, so that drops $303,000 from the bonded debt. So if you wanted to revisit that $655,000 roof next year, it kind of feathers nicely in there with the reduction in the bonded debt. So I think it's a, I think it's a good move if I may be so bold, as to state.
Andy?
So just to be clear, if we do decide to put the, the roof, the 625, what is it?
655-806.
806, as a warrant article, and that fails, that means we're, per law, we're not allowed to use funds to do that from any source because the old no means no scenario, correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
And if we do run into an emergency situation during the year with that roof, we would have to use funds to simply patch it or repair the, the issue area and, and then have to make a change or do the, the effort to replace it next budget season. Just so I understand the steps that we would go through.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm gonna pop quiz, a business administrator. Our emergency fund balance is what?
Right now, we have $350,000 in there.
Okay.
Yep.
So if, if it does not get added to with a warrant article this year, which we've also done and we have the consideration to do, then that would be a $300,000 difference for what the project would be if, if something did come up. Cindy, yeah?
Is there not a reason why we're adding a warrant article for that emergency fund? I mean, I remember the conversations over the last few years, which was about kind of building that up little by little over time so that, you know, something catastrophic comes along. Yeah, I'm much more comfortable taking a risk of deferring if we have a fund there that we can use if we absolutely need it. So I guess that's my question, why, if we should consider having something as a warrant.
That's a discussion point for, you know, from, like we normally do it from, from surplus, X amount of dollars up to, well, whatever, 10%, you know? So some certain, if you wanted to have that. We didn't, we didn't place that here because we just want to make things as, I think, as simple as possible this year.
I would like that. I mean, I'm just speaking for myself. I would, I would like something like that as essentially, I think it's just prudent to have and I don't feel like we have enough money there right now to cover something that the district might, could happen.
Well, one of the worst things that could happen is we could have another electrical issue where we have to do an emergency repair or boiler or something like that. And those are around $300,000 to $500,000. Even though they're, they're off on the CIP, you know, perhaps building that fund up to $500,000 would make us feel a little bit more comfortable either in one year or two years because the, the Special Ed Capital Reserve Expendable Trust Fund has around $546,000. So that would give us, you know, between that and the Special Ed Fund, it would give us a million dollars in reserve that we could pull from in case of emergencies.
I mean, I would be more comfortable with that. And I, I would like to see, I mean, it continue to build little by little, year by year, just like someone would save in a savings account. I would, I don't know what that right amount is, but maybe a million dollars. But I just don't feel like anything less than a million is ultimate. I just feel like there should be a goal of, definitely more than what we have right now.
Andy, did you have your hands up-ish, down-ish on that?
Well, it depends on where, are we discussing, we've switched topics in the middle. And I want to know what, I mean, I have thoughts on a bunch of different things, but I want to make sure I'm following up.
Well, it's kind of falling off of your thought that if we put a warrant article up and it goes down, then now we can't do the work. But if it's not on there, but we have an emergency where it's raining inside, we didn't have that warrant article, but we have enough emergency funds to cover that expense, we actually have the capability to do it. So you actually started it.
Okay. So my intent was that if we said the, the roof, roof replacement was voted down, the emergency fund would allow us to repair the roof to be able to get through for a period of time and not, I mean, I wasn't advocating using the funds to do a replacement. I was advocating the funds to repair. I mean, I don't, we don't have any roofs left of the same ilk that we had at the middle school that were, would have a catastrophic failure with a ripping of the seams like we had at the middle school. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Right.
That was, that was a roof where you could literally, you could literally see it move, you know? So it was one of these things where that was, that was definitely a candidate for a quick and catastrophic failure.
But the point is, is that if we had another roof fail, it would be sort of spotty failures that, that would be easily accommodated by what we have within that fund today.
Yes.
Because my, my personal belief is, what'd you say, 350,000? Is that what's in there?
Yes, yes.
It's a whole lot healthier, healthier than it was a few years ago when we started, when we drained it because of some of the other issues that we had.
Superstorm Sandy, the phone system.
Well, it was, yeah.
You had a road.
Bleachers.
You can create the list of, the bleachers, I think, were the thing that put it down over the edge that one year. So I don't, I mean, my temptation, I don't know what my temptation is yet. But the bottom line is I'm not as uncomfortable as Cindy is with the level that it is today. I'm not sure that a million dollars is what we need for emergency repairs because it doesn't need to completely rebuild something necessarily. Because if some, that happened, we've got insurance and other money that would come into play. So I guess I'm just trying to balance all these different potentials into warrants, so.
Okay. Cindy?
Yeah, I mean, whatever that final number is, it's not going to happen this year. So I just think we need to add something consistent with maybe like what we did last year or bring it even to 150,000 to half a million. But whatever that final number is, I don't know what that is, but I just don't feel like we have enough right now.
Fair. I think when we did have some big catastrophes, that half a million did come close to coming up, so. Andy?
Just a final thought. This discussion that we're having is really healthy because at the end of the day, we're talking about creating warrant articles that actually provides what the voters have been asking us for several years and that's provide more input into the components that make up what the budget is. So the more, one of, a lot of my questions as we go through the, the evening are going to be around things that were in the operating budget that we might consider putting into warrants to give it more of a, more of a choice to the voters as to what that they do so that our operating budget is potentially a little, is lean, a little leaner and that a lot of the infrastructure things could potentially be put into warrant articles to give voters a choice on what to do. So that's sort of the approach I'm taking. So this, we may disagree on it, but the general conversation is, is the right approach, so.
So at this point, what I'm gonna ask, and we don't have to have a formal motion because we're not going to actually vote on warrant articles tonight. We're gonna talk about what we want authored. That will be vetted by DRA. So to the Department of Revenue Administration. So to that end, is it the will of the board to have a warrant article on roofing for Master Cola Elementary slash JMU's in the amount of $655,805? So if I could just kind of do a roll call, it's not like an official vote, but just kind of a will of the board. Brandy, how do you feel?
I do. I think that's the right approach.
Okay. Naomi, what are your thoughts?
I'm ambivalent. I, I'm, I, it sounds like it can wait, in which case I'd rather use the warrant articles for other things, but it's not a big deal to me, one way or the other.
Okay. Andy?
I'd like to see as a warrant article, only because if we look at things that go further out, we've got things like wood floors, we've got bleachers that we're going to be talking about, we've got windows. I, I think it's good to put a couple of options out there for voters this year. So I'd be in support of having a warrant proposed.
Thank you. Cindy?
I'm in favor of deferring, but only if we can do the warrant article for our reserve fund.
And I am in kind of where you're at, Cindy, because I think, again, there are things that, you know, we recall for planning and strategizing, we have to talk about what makes sense. And I'm afraid that if there are too many high-ticket items for them to, to choose from, that it's just going to be overwhelming to the board to see how that could end up as a bottom line. And again, it's definitely something, and I'm looking at the document that we have in front of us, which will be posted on our website tomorrow, which is the total bonded debt and capital improvements. And it has, you know, again, we have some room next year if we defer everything one year. And on top of that, there's a number in 2023, 24, which is a little misleading, which is the MHS field at 1.2 million dollars. Anyone that had actually watched our capital improvement plan meeting would be aware that we are talking about, that's the cost of the project. So we do have to project it out and vet it with the planning board per RSA. But it's something that we have talked about as a board that would require fundraising to offset that cost. So although it's there in our CIP, it's not something we're expecting to request via taxation, exclusive taxation from, from the voters, from the people of Merrimack. So it's a very misleading number. And by putting this up cold on the website without that context, makes it seem like we could actually create a spike in '23, '24 by moving everything one year. And that's not the case whatsoever. So 1.2 million would be coming down from that 3,610, so it'd be 1.8 million. So if there was a movement, there would still be some room in there to kind of have that level number in the total bonded debt and capital improvements. So Naomi?
So I think that part of the difficulty here is that until we know what other warrant articles we discuss, it's hard to know whether this one will be
Sure.
useful. So it might be worth simply saying yes to drafting it, so that we have it available and then we can go from there.
I think that's, that's a good idea. So thank you. And I think Matt knows the formula to get past the DRA pretty well in his 17 years of experience doing it here? Plus a little on the side of the town.
20, 30 in total.
30 in total. So I think we've, we've got it in the right hands, the right author's hands.
I can write it up.
Thank you.
I will say though, that this is the first time we put a roof as a warrant article that I've been involved with this budget stuff for a long time. So this is, this is a new approach that we're taking, so.
Absolutely. So the next is, and actually I'll just go, I'm gonna jump down to bleachers. We'll go back up to master plan study because bleachers is something that has been on the CIP for a couple of years and master plan's the newest, so I think it's gonna take a little more discussion. So the bleachers in Smith Gym for $105,000 is not in the operating budget to be wanted as a warrant article. And I'll start with you, Cindy.
Well, my question is regarding safety. So in the past, when we've had bleachers that were not safe, the board had made the decision to put it in the operating budget due to the safety issue. So I just want to get a feel for what the current state of the safety is on those bleachers.
Me? Okay. Currently, the, the bleachers are inspected every year. Any welds that need to be taken care of are taken care of. The main, the main priority or the main rationale behind these bleachers in the Smith Gym is they're not really ADA compliant. So you're walking up the wooden bleachers and there's no railings or anything to hold on. So it's, it's really the, the old school type bleachers. And the, actually, I think it was the Planning and Building Committee. And the, uh, actually, I think it was the planning and building committee brought this to us as a concern after a few members were there and had to walk from the, I think they go up six, six or eight rows. It's not, it's not like the, um, the J Mews APR at all. Those are fairly flat, but these go up a slope and there's, there's really, there's really no rails or anything like that. So it's more of an ADA kind of safety thing as opposed to a there and disrepair because they're still functional.
So are there penalties involved for not, not being compliant?
No.
Do they get grandfathered in?
They're grandfathered in, yes.
Then, then I don't have a problem putting it on a warrant article.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other discussions on bleachers? See, Andy?
This is a good example of wanting to put in a warrant article simply because it'll test whether, whether people believe that it's a thing, uh, an issue or not, right? So, and but the, the interesting part is those, those bleachers have been there since I was in high school, so they were put in, what, seventy-three or seventy-four, I think is the, the year that those were there. And it's amazing to me that they're still structurally sound. I mean, so when, when Tom said that, no, they're not, they're not a, a structural issue, I was sort of shocked pleasantly, actually. Means we didn't have to, in an emergency way to do it. So, um, so I'm in support of putting this in a warrant article because I think it's a, a good, good example of the kind of thing we let voters decide on.
And give credit where credit's due, it was a good manufactured product. They make it, they don't make it like that anymore type thing.
Solid oak.
But on top of that, we just have just such a superior maintenance department that really takes care of our facilities that we can exceed life expectancy on most of our infrastructure and we've actually benefited from that consistently since I've been on the board and, and longer, I'm sure.
So thank you for saying that. And I, and I wanted to just make a point because it sort of relates to maybe a theme that's going to come out tonight. So the question was asked, are they, um, structurally sound and they are? And the issue is primarily that they're not ADA compliant. And, and this really gets to the heart of what I think I, for one, feel like I want to talk about, which is what's, what's our tolerance for bare minimums and what's our tolerance for excellence? And so this would be a case where, um, you know, the fact that we technically can get by without having something be ADA compliant, um, doesn't necessarily, in my view only, I'm speaking for myself, doesn't necessarily mean it's the right thing to do. So our, I would, for what it's worth, I mean, the idea of having it be in a warrant article says that, it says two things. We don't necessarily need it to be in the budget, but, um, you know, we're trying to be, I think, in some respects, um, supportive of ideas that we're trying to create a district that has, that's welcoming to people with challenges. And so technically, we don't have to, but is it the right thing to do? Though, and we're going to talk about other things like that tonight, too. So anyway, it's just in that context that I just share that.
Well, I'm going to take a little turn and say that in that same spirit, I have to ask and it might be something, you know, just from my own observation and maybe I'm, I could be off on this, but the bleachers in the Smith Gym are this year and the J Mews bleachers, uh, for the APR are next year. And the one thing I'll say about the J Mews, uh, bleachers, the APR ones, is that's the hub of Merrimack. That's where we have so many of our town meetings and everything else. And yes, it does save forty-five thousand dollars in what we'd be asking, but does it make sense if that's where we have most of our community gatherings, um, to, to flip the two? Because again, that's where we're, we're bringing in, um, probably the most broad brush stroke of people. And again, if we're trying to be ADA compliant, I think you're going to have a lot more people that would need that, those supports in that room over the other. So it's just by two cents, but it's out of nowhere, so I'm sorry, I'm throwing you a hook there.
No, you're not actually, and I think Matt, um, do you want to speak to, um, the, the, the issue of the J Mews bleachers and the, uh, the floor and why we've positioned them together and in that year?
They've been, um, bundled there with the floor because the J Mews floor is original. It cannot take another sanding and it, it needs some, um, it needs some care right now. So we were thinking that the bleachers come off, the floor come off, new flooring goes down and then new bleachers go in as opposed to putting new bleachers in and then having to take them, disassemble them, move them to another location and then do a floor.
Makes total sense. I'm trying to save forty-five thousand, I almost cost us ninety.
And, and, and in addition, um, because this was a subject of some discussion, too. Um, so, um, just elaborating what Matt said, Tom Tussow says that that can't be sanded anymore.
Right.
So, so it's, right. So it has to be a new floor and there's a long history of that being a wood floor. So there's a lot of tradition around that. And so VCT is, is a, not a wood floor. And so what we thought was that, you know, because this is a school that means a lot to a lot of people, it's, it has tradition and it's used in a lot of ways that we need to have a really fully vetted discussion about the kind of floor that that would be, which is why, uh, we didn't want to sort of push it this year, so.
I withdraw, I withdraw the idea.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's a good question.
It's going to be more harm than good. So absolutely. Are there any other comments on bleachers for Smith Gym? Because I, I wish I'd never made the idea of the camera, of the other one. Yeah, sure.
I mean, are there any economies of scale we would get if we combined them together? Um, I guess what I, I'm wondering, I just feel like if we ended up with a warrant this year for bleachers and a warrant next year for bleachers, the public might say, we just did bleachers last year and it might, it might be a perception issue. So I, I'm wondering if A, we have any buying power to do them all at the same time, um, or if we really should consider combining that this year if we're going to defer the roof. Um, I don't know that I feel like it's a, a moot point, that's.
I, seriously, uh, the, the bleacher companies that we've dealt with, um, I, I don't, I don't think there's much economies of scale to be gained as far as this goes. You know, everybody knows when you have a, um, you have a project, you've got a certain amount of general conditions, but when the product comes and arrives, it gets set up very quickly. Um, so there's not a lot of on-site labor happening. Uh, it's not a lot of mobilization of crews, so I don't see a, um, economy of scale to be gained by doing two sets of bleachers at the same time.
So let me ask another question. Um, so is it not, it's, it's too premature to be able, is what I, is what I am hearing, is it that it's too premature to be able to lump it all together for this year?
I think, I think I'd echo what, what Mark said. I'd like to have a conversation on the J Mews floor before I dove into the J Mews bleachers because I'd like to do that as one, that could be one project and one warrant article. There's nothing that says you have to in the, in the next year or wherever, just, uh, say J Mews bleachers article. You could do, do J Mews renovations to include bleachers and, uh, flooring. And by then, we would have kind of talked about, do we want to go back with wood, which is nice, it's traditional? Or do we want to do with something a little more durable, seeing we use that as a cafeteria also? But Tom, on the other hand, is looking at cafeteria wheels on tables that they can retrofit the current cafeteria tables so they won't mar or mark a wood floor. So
Okay.
we're still not there yet as far as what we want to do.
Well, I did like the idea for a variety of reasons of putting it all together, but it doesn't sound like it will work, so.
Yeah.
I think what we, uh, again, what we're trying to, I appreciate that very much. What, what we're trying to do is, um, be planful and, um, and, and so I think that the board has expected us to be planful and certainly the community would expect us to do that. And there are other areas where we are, are trying to put a plan in place to be able to consider the best ideas and the best way to approach things. And this is just an example where it seems like it's, like you said, maybe just a little bit before its time.
Okay. So with that, um, as it stands right now, um, it's going to kind of do the same will of the board. Does it make sense that we put together a warrant article for the bleachers? For Smith Gym, to be clear, for Smith Gym? Yes, yes? I'm thinking, yes? I'm thinking maybe. There's a maybe on the end.
Um, I'm, I personally would be more in favor of pushing it and lumping it in for next year. Um, but I'm sitting here trying to figure out how, with everything else we have, what that might look like for next year and does that make most sense? But as far as the bleachers are concerned, as well as, um, the APR scenario, I think it just makes more sense to put them together. Um, so I would be more in favor of pushing it until next year.
Okay.
Let's, like we did with the roof, let's have them create a warrant and then we'll, we'll debate it. So I think the next topic may
Right.
feed into her
Okay.
questions.
So, and that's the one that's had, uh, the shortest time on our, um, CIP, so that's, that's why I wanted to put it last, so. And that is the master plan study for the redesign of the, uh, campus off of Babusak Lake Road, which would include the Master Cola Elementary, upper elementary and high school complex as well as our administrative buildings.
So I'm going to, uh, have Matt speak to that in a minute, but I just want to start. So he's talking about being planful. So, um, the, the, as everybody on the board knows better than I, the issue of the SAU office has been discussed probably since the year that I was married, which is nineteen ninety-five. I think it might've been maybe even before that. So, um, so that's, that's a long time. So I think that, uh, logically, anybody would say if it was beginning to be discussed in nineteen ninety-five, then there might have been a reason in nineteen ninety-five to discuss it. If there was a reason in nineteen ninety-five to discuss it, there's certainly a reason in twenty-twenty to discuss it. Um, and, uh, this is, I just want to say, you know, I've been in that building ten years. This is not a luxury. We have people in that building who, uh, are not, you know, they work downstairs and, you know, I think every day, uh, if there were some emergency of some sort, you know, it's not a joke, we've got to get those people out of there. So this is not a luxury. This is something we really do have to consider and I know the board is, has done that. But this is not just about central office. It exists in a place that is a, that is, could be argued as like the hub of the town of Merrimack. There are three schools on that street. Um, there is, uh, uh, there are a lot of community events, not just school events, community events. We hear all the time, there was just a meeting today at the high school with Matt and the principal and a number of parents and students talking about parking. Parking includes whether there's enough parking to accommodate the need. Parking also includes lighting and other safety features. It includes conversations about egress and ingress, uh, traffic flow. Um, it includes conversations about what to do with the Brentwood property, um, which we didn't buy as a building, but it's been said so often, we bought for the land because we should have access to do something with that land. And so it's our position that, um, it doesn't make sense for non-engineer people to just say, well, I think we should put up a light there and maybe we should put this here. That doesn't seem to be respectful of what we're asking the community to, to consider paying for. So what we've done is we've said, we need to get somebody in here, um, give them the scope of what we're interested in. Get up in a helicopter and look fifty feet down, look at the whole area and tell us how it would be best optimized. How should the traffic flow work? Where can we get more parking? What does safe, good, secure, um, lighting look like? How do we optimize that whole space? And no one here, among the three of us, is qualified to do that. And so, um, we think that it would be useful for, um, the plan to be, a plan or multiple plans to be presented to the board so that it can consider, um, its options, but knowing that it's been developed by somebody who knows how to do this. And so I would just, Matt can provide, you know, maybe more detail, but I just wanted to set the context. That's the reason, um, that we're trying to do this so that we're not, you know, just spending money, uh, illogically by throwing up a couple of lights here and then a couple of years from now we'll say, oh, we should never put those lights there, we need to put a parking space there. Now we take down the light and we put park. So that doesn't seem to be a smart use of money. That's the reason that we have this in here. I, I don't know if you want to.
I think you've kind of alliterated it fairly well, so I really don't have that, that much to add. But, you know, we talk about lighting, everything like that. We want to make sure the lighting is where it needs to be. Uh, we also, as part of the town center committee, we've been talking, Tracy Bull will, will know because she preceded me on that committee. We talked about a sidewalk along O'Gara, um, everything. So this is part of the plan to see what works best for us long-term, so.
I'm seeing hands probably up to my right, so I see Naomi and I see Cindy, so she's deferring to you first, Cindy.
Can you remind me if this concept of the, um, campus design was run by the planning and building committee?
Yes.
Did we get their
Yes, it was. We got their
Voice of approval on that?
We did.
Yes, we did. And this is in the operating budget, so.
Okay. And then the other question that I have, is there not some other options that we can walk before we're run? We run, like, I know Mr. Moore was here last week and he had me to suggest, are there ways to get prototypes without the whole?
Yeah, the, the design charrette that he mentioned.
The way to get prototypes before we go all in with the complete engineering study analysis. And then the third thing is, I don't really have a feel for what that hundred thousand dollars is. So like at work, when we do project plans and things, I can see how many hours are expected and, and what is the real meat around that proposal? And I haven't seen that detail to my knowledge.
Yeah, right, 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 right now, I can tell you, it's a, it's a rough estimate to, to mark all the utilities, do a new survey, up to date, and then come up with, uh, around three or four different plans to put in front of the board, attend evening meetings. I don't have a detailed scope of what it would all include, but it's, it's a rough estimate. It could come in, it could come in less than that. It depends which way we go. We could do the design charrette as Mr. Moore had, had mentioned, which is kind of intriguing, but it, it is a process and we could utilize the services of Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. And there's a lot of different ways. So if it seems like it is not neatly put with line items like this many hours for drafting, this many hours for 3D modeling, this many, it's because it's not.
Gotcha.
And it's a estimate.
I guess I'm really, I'll be really honest, I'm really uncomfortable with the hundred thousand dollars for this price tag. I absolutely, though, do agree that, um, where the superintendent's office is and administration's office is, um, substandard, you know, it's, it's actually, it's not safe even. I mean, I just don't think it's a, a place that our people should be in very long, but I just still feel like we have to walk before we can run. And I feel like we need the public's buy-in on a project of this scope before we can put such a large amount of money into something like this. So I don't know what ideas we have or other ways that we could do it, but I, I'm just uncomfortable with that amount of money for, um, what I feel like is a prototype. So that's, I'm just putting that on the table.
Can I?
Yeah, of course. Respond to?
So, yep. So, um, I, I, I hear that completely and I think you'll see later tonight that, um, I'm going to provide that as an option for the board to consider. Kind of. Um, however, what I, what I would just say is that I think there was a point in the past, I'm not sure who, um, but I think someone may have commented that we could maybe get, uh, you know, sort of have some volunteer, uh, for, I forget what it was, maybe it was for a turf field or something, that someone would come in and just sort of out of their goodness would provide us with some guidance. Um, that's just not going to happen. And, and so I, I would say that, um, that number, Matt's right, that number is an estimate, might come in lower. But what I, what I would say, and I think, uh, Mr. Moore's idea of a design charrette, which you can guarantee, I looked up when I, when I got home and I, I had more learning about it, is a brilliant one. I think the point that I want to make is that, um, what we're trying to do is spend, let's say, no more than a hundred thousand dollars to be able to provide the board with bona fide options so that it doesn't, you know, commit to, let's say, a one point two or whatever the amount would be without knowing, so that to me, just my, that is running before we're walking because otherwise, without that, a lot of what we're proposing would a lot of what we're proposing would be best guesses by people who weren't qualified to make them. And so for me, I would feel that um the board would be in receipt of documents, multiple options. It could look like this, it could look like this, it could look like this, upon which you could base decisions about whether you wish to or not spend or put on a warrant any particular type of activity. So that's what what we're trying to get is uh data for the board that it can be action, that can be actionable.
So I absolutely agree that I feel like, you know, to just kind of plop a building here or there or whatever, without looking at the big picture, if we have to spend the money anyways to put everything up or whatever we need to do to get everything in a unified campus of around necessity, um that if if we do have to spend money for that, that we would wanna do it the correct and the right way. And that I do agree that we don't have the expertise or the engineering or all of those details from a design, from a engineering standpoint, you know, to be able to lay that out. So I actually, I think that's a great idea, but I just feel like I have really struggling with that dollar amount. And what we could do that would still kinda help get us in that direction with without that kind of a, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money and again, for something that I don't feel like the public has enough information about.
Okay, I'm just gonna kinda jump in with, again, thinking out loud, which is not my favorite thing to do. But would we be able to contact someone like Akich Nordstrom, who has done a number of projects for us, to talk about the scope of the facility, which he knows very well? And um what type of design work is needed and give an estimate as to what that type of work would cost if, say, a firm like his did such work? Um and obviously, we can put it out to bid, but you know.
Oh, you absolutely would, but yeah, we can uh contact uh
Just just to see if the numbers align.
To see if we can get a finer tuned number.
Excellent. In that way, um I guess what I would say is, you know, based on what comes back, we would look at if the number is, you know, we would we would take the number that is suggested, maybe at ten percent, because again, it's an estimate. And maybe that's the number we would use for the warrant article. Um would that make you feel a little more?
I don't mind spending money on it. If it were, if it were ten percent of that, then that's a whole different story to me in my view as.
Right. But but if like Keach Nordstrom came back and they said, um, you know, just 'cause they're ones that have that know our facility is probably the best right now, so I'm using them as an example, and I'm putting them on the spot on camera, so sorry, Steve. Uh but on that note, um if he said, you know what, maybe this could be done for sixty-five thousand dollars. So I would say take sixty-five thousand and a ten percent, that'll call variation to that to say, you know, in case it's not, there's some work that we didn't project. Say it's sixty-five, now it's like, say, say to a seventy-two thousand dollar warrant article, 'cause based on his estimates and his expertise, he could see doing the project in that space. So the one thing is, they were looking at a number to have a number, but I'm not sure that we have anyone in our bailiwick that would say, um, you know, we're we're not, we have, we don't have an architect in our ranks. We don't have an engineer in our ranks that would say, that's a good number to to work with. So maybe just getting a validated approach to that number. Maybe a hundred thousand is the right number. Maybe we were low and it's a hundred and twenty-five, but right now we went with something we thought would be an educated guess, or maybe we need something with more of a, more of a
More of an education to give a better guess.
More of an engineered guess. I think it's the best way to put it.
Now, now you keep referring to this as a warrant article. It's in the operating budget.
Right.
Okay, but I just keep hearing, I'm just concerned that you're thinking you need a warrant article.
It's 'cause I put my note there that it was.
Yeah.
So that was my fault.
Well, and even more, even more the reason, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars in the operator does, operating budget doesn't give the public a chance to weigh on it at all um for something that they would ultimately have to approve in the long run. So that's that's part of it, too. I don't I don't mind it in the operating budget if it's a smaller amount where we're doing some exploratory and getting some things in line that we can further present to the public. But I just, that dollar amount is just uh too high for me. I just don't feel like I have enough to support it.
And to follow on your comment from earlier, um so when the time comes from the board, please wish your wife a happy twenty-fifth anniversary from us. It's coming this year. So, um Andy?
So I probably have the most footprints all over this this part of the article or this part of the discussion of of everybody, given my driving of the purchase of the Brentwood property as well as working with planning and building for years on this thing. One of the things that concerned me when when planning and building put this sort of de facto plan together as the basis for how we could maybe do an engineering plan is, is it was a bunch of their view of what things could go there, right? And I think in listening to uh what Mr. Moore said about about getting public input to start with, there's a lot of valid validity to that, because there are things that are in the, what planning and building said, like, geez, we could put a tennis court here. Oh, we could do this, we could do that. And I think one of the things, one of the challenges that we've had is I'm gonna use an expression that's been used for other things, but if we want the voters to ultimately not only approve doing a study, but also doing the work that includes an SAU sped combined office and the reconstruction of parking and whatever else we do, we have to sort of win their, win their support for this overactivity that we wanna do. I know that when we talked about the SEU sped building, I talked earlier on about making sure that Merrimack contractors could have the jobs to be able to keep the money in town for the construction of it. In many ways, getting the input of the voters to make them part of the process from ground zero, to look at what can be done in that area, has a lot of value. Because this is not gonna get solved in one year. It may not get solved in two. So for me, what I would would, and I know the planning and building guys are gonna shoot me, so I'll have to put lead over my windows, is I'd really like to spend this budget year really proactively engaging the public to talk about what it is our plan is in this area. Get their input, what the kind of things that need to be there before we spend the money on a plan. Because the plan could be two or three options that include the things that the the voters wanna have. They could include tennis courts, they could include expanding a field. We've got a wooded area that that we could take down and expand a field behind Mass Call. There's a whole bunch of different options of what we can do. And I think that us evaluating those first and kicking off a project before we bank the money to spend it on a on a design might be a more prudent and gradual approach in a way that we build more support for this project over the time. I'm just thinking out loud, I I share Cindy's concern that having this in the base operating budget without a lot of context, other than it's just an engineering design, could be problematic. We're trying to make the board um come up with a proposed budget that makes sense here. So having that in there concerns me a little bit. I'm also not really in favor of putting into a separate warrant article, because again, there's not a lot of context around it, right? There's still a lot of questions, so. Anyway, so that's my thought. And Shannon, do you agree?
No.
Everything Cindy said, yes.
I was just gonna say that I don't know that they have to be broken out by two separate years. I mean, it doesn't mean that we can't put some money and have some methodology for putting some money to explore it. And then um getting that input before doing it. I mean, I don't think we have to spend the whole year getting input and then get prototypes next year, I feel like. 'Cause we are starting to run out of time with that.
But that means that we would have to have the money budgeted in this year to do that. And it's, and is it a hundred thousand dollar or zero scenario?
I mean, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, then maybe I agree with you. But if it's a few thousand dollars to get prototypes and get
Well, but from what we were told, when we talked about this a couple of months ago, the only really valid engineering or or plan is where somebody would go and say, you can put this here because there's not ledge, you you can't put something here because there is ledge, um and things like that. So I mean, that's, to me, the thought process going through my mind is, is if we're not, if if we're talking about this because we don't wanna budget the money, then let's not, whatever, I'll stop talking.
Yeah, please.
So I I will do whatever the board, yeah, obviously. I just wanna, I feel like it's, I just have to say, uh just one thing, that um the one thing that I think could be frustrating is if in our effort to um, you know, obviously, it's great to get people in on the ground floor. But I think this um, over the years, we've had a number of people who have lots of ideas. But then, for a variety of reasons, those ideas have not been able to work out because of things like requirements around um, you know, like people wanted to do things with the addition of the high school and then, you know, for an SAU office, but then couldn't when it was discovered. And so I think part of what this, whether the plan costs five thousand or a hundred thousand, I think part of the thing would be to kinda set the context for, you know, don't spend a lot of time and emotional investment thinking that you can do this when later we'll tell you we never could, because to Andy's point, there's ledge here or there's a state requirement about this, or you have to build thirty feet from that. And then people might, the other way to look at it is people might say, well, geez, if you knew that, I wish you told me. So part of the goal of a plan could be to kinda lay the groundwork for it. Here are the things that are known knowns, and here are things that are known unknowns. And from that, do your thinking. But I think to, because this is, you know, this is the kind of thing where we've got a lot of people with thoughts. Um but respectfully, not everybody knows what the state laws are about, you you know, easements and where the new highway is gonna be and how would that is gonna impact and so on. So there's a lot of ideas, but we have to operationalize them with rules and regs um that I think a plan of whatever scope will provide guidance to. So I'm totally hearing the concern about the money and we certainly can work with Steve Keach and get a a tighter amount and then be perfectly prepared to have the board not wanna do that. But that's just my plea about the importance of of, I I do think we need some sort of plan to set the stage for what people can even know what they're gonna talk about when we invite them to talk about it.
Okay, I saw uh Naomi and Brandy.
So um somewhat random question, how much of this is cost that will incur anyway, if and when we do anything? As in, we're going to have to know where the utilities are and where the ledges and all of these things we're talking about. We're going to have to know at some point, before we build. And so how much of it is cost actually for the design piece and how much is learning our own land, which would have to be done at some point regardless?
Well, it'd be it'd be for the design piece, too. Like, if you wanted to to put in a new central office, you would you would look at the perhaps the current footprint, perhaps you would wanna re redesign the current footprint into something else, depending upon where it may fit best. So any any money that you spend in this is part of your A and E budget, the architectural and engineering budget, you're gonna have to do anyway. Mark was talking about uh, you know, is there ledge over there, is there not ledge over there? Part of it would be to to do test borings in certain areas. You know, probably under the, there's a ninety percent chance that underneath the parking lot of the high school uh where the parking lot is proper, it's all sand, 'cause that area seems to be all sand. But then, as you get closer to the power lines, there seems to be ledge. How deep is that ledge? So it's, there's there's some unknowns, but so there'd be some actual um mechanical work that would have to be done in order to guarantee that what you wanna do, you can do. It's like when we were um doing work at the the middle school, we paid Miller Engineering years ago probably around fifty-five thousand dollars to do test borings all over the site to figure out what was underneath. So they could design everything properly, so. It's money you're gonna, you're gonna spend the money anyway if you're gonna go forward with any sort of development of that site.
So I agree completely that I'd I'd love to have a closer figure, or rather, have some expert sense of its cost apart from our guess would be wonderful for this. But ultimately, I think it's important for it to be noted that this isn't simply paying somebody to bring us ideas. I mean, when you see a plan, then it could be the sense that we're essentially asking somebody to be creative and draft something for us. And that's the part we want to engage the town in. But there's also this other cost which has to do specifically with knowing the parameters and that we're going to need regardless.
I have Brandy and then I have you, Cindy.
I think part of the concern is that when we're looking at spending any amount of money, the first thing that I typically am hearing, especially lately, is that if it doesn't tie back to our children's education and the educational impact uh for anybody in K through twelve or preschool through twelve, um then we should put a hold on it. I think it's really important to, as part of this plan, express how much of an impact there would be to our learners. Because there is a, a part of this is not just, well, we're gonna build an SAU building. Um, you know, our superintendent office is, the green building is in disrepair and it's really just not really um safe anymore. I I think it goes so much farther beyond that. And I think we need to do a better job of perhaps showing pictures of what that area does look like and why we would be interested in these changes and how those changes could affect our learners. Because there is a significant um piece to this that does directly impact the high school, that does directly impact the safety of our students, that does directly affect our administration for sure. But all of the areas that it does impact, not only administration, but also our students. I think that that is a component to this, that it's not just the dollar amount. It's also what is the impact of the money spent and how much of that impact touches our learners.
One alternative, once we have a tighter number, I guess, depending on what that is. Um I mean, I I just like Mr. Moore's idea first, I wanna say. Um but secondly, um if it is significant, one thing we could do, just throwing it out there, I'm not saying I necessarily want to do that right now, but we could put it on a warrant and then um provide some informational sessions for the public. Because I really do feel, when you look at this kind of an investment as we go forward, really needs the public buy-in. And, you know, one way to do it would be, A, to let them um vote specifically on it and B, would be to socialize it with the public through um some meetings before voting day. And then it, they, the public has their voice.
Naomi?
Three times in one night. And I'd be concerned about it being a warrant article without knowing more about what that would restrict us from doing if it were voted no. Same idea. We would, would we then be restricted from planning for a year? That if we had, if we wanna spend ten dollars on planning, would we be allowed to do that piece or would that also be locked out? I'd want to know more about those parameters before before doing that.
Okay, so right now it's in the operating budget. So again, that was my misfire going forward. Uh 'cause we were looking to see what we want from warrant articles that weren't in the operating budget, so on that. Um 'cause we will definitely vet the operating budget separately. So I think we just started a conversation on that. But the two areas that were warrant articles that we wanted to make sure we were talking about was roofing and um the uh goodness, uh bleachers. And so both of those will be drafted.
Yep.
And uh the other one I think we want to draft um would be the surplus going to the emergency fund.
Yep.
All right, um now that I have, I was kind of trying to rate the ship, 'cause I obviously took us off course a little bit. Uh again, apologies. Um are there any other um areas where we feel we need to talk more in articles before we go on to uh the discussion of the um the actual budget and and where we want the the budget to end? Okay, um so with that, uh the item number five is the budget discussion. And that is really, you know, we were presented with the budget, which after our adjustments at our last meeting, based on actual enrollments, went down to eighty million, six hundred and forty something thousand. Um and so with that, um, you know, that's still a number that's four hundred thousand over default. Um we have vetted why that is extensively over the last few weeks since before the holiday. And at this point, are there any thoughts about what we wanna see for a final budget? You know, 'cause we know that um historically, the board has been below default. But, you know, I think the why we're going over default has been has been well defined. So are there any thoughts from the board as to the budget that has been put forth to us? And what we're looking to see as a final budget as a board? Um are you ready? You look like you want to raise your hand?
I think so.
Okay.
I'm I'm, so first of all, there's, we have to know our starting point. And the first thing I'd like to entertain is what we discussed at the very end of our last meeting about the discovery of the more optimum healthcare planning, to find out whether that is our new starting point for discussions of the budget.
Okay.
'Cause right now, the number, right now, the numbers are the the eighty-one million proposed and the high eighty million default. This four hundred something thousand less. So I'd like us first to decide as a board whether we wanna go forward with those new starting point numbers, 'cause it'll help clarify our discussion.
Okay. Okay, and I think is a, I would say the will of the board during our discussions was to go to the actual versus the projected. Because again, when the budget was designed, we were still dealing with a manual enrollment process for healthcare. So, we had to go with using prior year's enrollment structure and this year's rates for those enrollments. And since then, with the automation, that process that came in that process, we now have the, um, the final enrollments with, where they actually fall in the different plans. And on top of that, I think this is the last year we'll have to have that challenge because with the automation, we'll know much earlier than when the budget books are actually, um, finalized to, to present to us what those actual enrollments will be. So, again, from a paper to an electronic, and now we can do this much more efficiently in, in future years. So, so with that, do we feel as a board, do you want finalized that we want our new starting point at that eighty million, six hundred thousand? Because we kind of talked about it, but we didn't finalize it, that's what we want. Um, Naomi.
Were we going to get legal advice on whether or not it was going to the, there was more that we talked about around that, as to whether it could be put in the default or not, and those pieces?
Oh, the health insurance, if you're going to take it out of the, um, the operating budget, you're going to pull it from your default. So, your, your default budget is eighty million, two sixty-four, four thirteen. Whereas before, it was four hundred fifty thousand dollars higher. Um, so your new starting point is the eighty million, six sixty-seven, seven forty-two. And then we go from there. And every, we have given out this sheet here. And in every sheet, we've taken that right off the top, the, the four fifty, one oh four. That's the first reduction.
Okay.
So, my only, so I agree that the default has it removed, but the starting point for our budget needs to be, I mean, if we're going to accept it, we're going to accept it on both sides. The default budget as well as the proposed budgets, which means that the proposed budget drops down to below eighty-one million dollars right off the start.
Correct.
And what I'd like to do is take a vote of the board to see if we're okay with that.
Okay.
And then have the exact dollar amounts of where we're starting from.
Okay.
In each of those scenarios, that, to me, I think we need to have that clean starting point.
So, you're moving that we remove the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was, was realized by the actual enrollment?
From both the proposed budget as well as the default budget to start, yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Made by Naomi? Um, is, is, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none?
My, my only question is, because you weren't there, do you know what we're talking about?
I'm just getting a different number. So, the starting number for default that I am seeing on this is eighty-two sixty-four. Am I missing?
Well, I think Matt jumped the gun. The, the actual number is eighty million, uh, four, six, seven hundred and fourteen thousand or something like that?
Yeah, the, the original number for default was eighty million, seven fourteen, five seventeen. Then we had the health insurance.
Enrollments.
Enrollments, more accurate projection, which subtracted four hundred and fifty thousand, one oh four. So, your new default number is eighty million, two sixty-four, four thirteen.
So, can we just pause there for a second? Because this is super important, and I want to just make sure, um, we should take the time we need. So, the original, original budget that was presented was eighty-one million, something, right?
Yeah.
Just for the viewers who are not listening last week, I would just want to say, and then, in a conversation between Board Member Schneider and Matt, there was a conversation about how to maybe recalculate the insurance based on actual, you know, now that we had actual numbers of students, of, uh, teachers enrolled in their different plans. When it was put together in October, you know, in the fall, we didn't have those. Okay, so that's what Chair Barnes was just describing. So, then, that happened, and when that happened, that brought that, uh, amount down, the budgeted amount down by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And what that means is that both the budgeted amount and the default go down by that same amount. But we're still four hundred thousand dollars over default, right? So, just want to be clear that people understand, so that everything is lower because of the, uh, way that, uh, Chair, uh, Board Member Schneider, um, and Matt worked it out. So, can you, Matt, just say, again, what is the current proposed operating budget? And what is the current default budget?
The current?
With that, with that, I'm sorry, with that minus four fifty?
With the minus four fifty, okay, thanks, that, that clarifies, thanks. Uh, the current budget is, with the minus four fifty, one oh four, is eighty million, six sixty-seven, seven forty-two.
Okay, so that's, that's minus the four hundred and fifty thousand based on a revised estimate of, based on the enrollments that we know now. And then, Matt, the revised default budget is?
Default budget is eighty million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, four thirteen.
So, both numbers are lower, and we're still four hundred and some thousand dollars over default.
See, both ships sank in the tide, but the differential between both ships remain the same. Because the default was reduced by a like amount of the operating budget. You just haven't voted to reduce the operating budget by four fifty, and we assume that that would be forthcoming.
So, based on that, that's the starting point that we're proposing to take with the budget, now that we're talking about any deliberations to adjust what's been proposed.
Right, if we get, if we get hit by lightning ten minutes from now, that will be the budget that, the last thing we talk about.
That's, that's, that's a published budget now. So, with that, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero, the adjusted numbers are the new starting points. Thank you.
Perfect.
So, with that, um, I know that, um, Andy, when we talked at our last meeting that you were talking about, you know, can we be ready with numbers? You know, with the short time that we have with our budget cycles. And so, I think that the starting point tonight was, you know, what happens, you know, and again, we don't just want numbers, we want, we want to know impacts of numbers. And so, I think the first step is, you know, what happens if we go to default? What, between, what's the proposed operating budget and what's the default? Um, what can we actually be, what would we be doing without? And, you know, what is the impact to operations? So, Mark, um, got together with the team and, uh, put together four different situations that would get us to that number and is, um, prepared to talk about the operational consequences of each. So, I'm going to do, if, if it works for you. So, we're not talking about getting to a number yet, but let's talk about what happens when the number gets to default. Because I think that's where we're traditionally looking, where we traditionally sit with our operating budget, is very close proximity to default. So, if that works for you, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Mark. If you can vet the options that your team collaborated on and the, uh, operational impacts of each, I think that would be, um, really probably very beneficial.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So, at your table, you have, um, a packet, and as Chair Barnes said, uh, we've got four options. Um, it's a little different than what we've done in the past, because in the past, you might recall that we've provided you with a, a list of proposed cuts in tiers, so this would be like our, this would be the least objectionable things to the kind of middle objectionable things to the, oh my gosh, I hope you don't do these things. That's sort of how it's been in the past. We're not really taking that approach this year. Um, what we tried to do is present the board with four options that are generally characterized by, uh, similar items. And after we propose those, fully expect that the board may wish to take one item from here and another item from another option, and so, we invite that. But if, if it's all right, I'll just briefly summarize what the options are, and then we'll ask Matt and John, where appropriate, to join me in talking about the impacts of each. So, the first option, we're calling infrastructure. And what that, uh, what that primarily is made up of is, uh, windows at Merrimack High School for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, you'll see that in each of the options. Um, and then furniture replacement at each of the schools. And then finally, um, the demolition of the Brentwood Building for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then, again, Matt and John will provide color commentary. That gets us forty thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars below default. The revised default that you've just, uh, you know, approved. Option two, we're calling infrastructure plus Brentwood and the master plan. So, that's everything that I just mentioned to you. So, that would be the windows at Merrimack High School, the furniture, the Brentwood demolition, and the recently discussed one hundred thousand dollar master plan, uh, redesign study. The third option is infrastructure plus personnel. So, that's the windows. It's a little bit of a, it's a little bit more than just personnel, so I'll say it's the windows. Then the personnel, uh, and let me, I'm sorry, option two would be one hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars below default. Option two. Option three is the windows. And then the system of care coordinator, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. Then drainage at Merrimack Middle School. And in order to get us below default, we've added the coral risers at the high school and binding of books, and that gets us literally twenty-one dollars under default. The fourth option is infrastructure plus curriculum-guided student experiences and remedial support. So, that's the windows and field trips. So, really, field trips are curriculum-guided student experiences, that's what they are. They're not fluff, they are intended to be used by teachers and experienced by students as additions and supplements to their experience. So, in many cases, they can see what they're learning, touch what they've been learning about, feel what they've been learning about. That's what a curriculum-guided student experience is. Um, we've also removed charter school buses, some discussion, a bus, that was some discussion last week. We can describe for you more how we can do that. And then the transitional academic support, um, that's the eighty-five thousand dollar line that we discussed the other day that includes, um, evening academy, summer reading, and, um, the credit recovery programs at the high school. Um, and that is because technically, we don't have to provide that service. I think it's nice that we do, but we don't have to, and if we're required to, not required, but I mean, if, you know, if we have a goal, then we certainly can achieve that. So, that gets us nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars below default. And what I'd like to, maybe just, uh, if we, if we just wanted to discuss the, um, impacts of, of each, because the board has always want, wanted to know, don't just give me a cut, but explain to me what the impact is. Some of it might be pretty self-explanatory, but we just would like to provide that opportunity. So, um, Matt, do you want to just talk a little bit about the windows, because those are in all four of the options?
Yeah, the windows at Merrimack High School, um, you know, it's, it's a two, two-year plan, it's on the CIP. There are some windows where the seals are broken, and we're using mechanical devices to lock them at night. Use the term mechanical devices. Uh, they don't pose a safety hazard. Uh, the windows, even though the R-value's compromised, we're not losing a lot of energy through them. We have to replace them eventually, but it's something that they've been that way for quite a long period of time. And so, they can definitely wait for another year. Uh, and we probably wouldn't go through and, uh, you know, double up on that one either. We, we, however it is on the capital improvement plan, if there's a, spin down, see, there's no, there's not, uh, space to them, but we would probably just slide those to the, to the right, including the, um, the MHS one for three hundred and sixteen. Um, the other one is the Brentwood demolition on the bottom for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have, uh, looked at that and have gotten a, a pretty good estimate on that in, in addition to utilizing the utilities and the budget for that project. Uh, that would leave a, a flat site where you could, uh, without any further, uh, construction, perhaps use it as a gravel lot that is a lot closer than the lot where the skateboard park is. And we would put a nice crown on it so it wouldn't have a lake in the middle of it, as opposed to that lot there. So, it could be utilized for temporary parking until we figured out what we wanted to do with the whole, whole complex. So, you know, we would not demo that building, but leave it there for the time being with minimal heat through it. It is being used by the police department as a training facility. Uh, that is one use that it's been, you know, fairly successful, they like it. They can go from room to room and do their, their training, um, without going off-site or off, without going to, uh, another location. So, it's, it's, it's good for them and it serves that purpose. But it would just, you know, maintain it for another year, uh, right there in the, um, location that it currently sits with minor repairs and just minor heat. The rest is just the elimination of all the replacement furniture, uh, which we would just push off, uh, for a year. So, basically, that's what we're, we're looking at with option one.
Brandy, you have questions on option one?
I do, um, mainly relative to the furniture, um, replacement. Uh, in our budget book, um, it mentions that there's going to be two additional teachers at Thornton's. And I'm concerned that the Thornton's Ferry dollar amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine is to furnish those two classrooms that will be needed. So, if we remove that from our budget, how will we, um, where will the furniture come for those classrooms to teachers?
So, it's an excellent question, and actually Chair Barnes, um, had mentioned something like that, uh, also. Uh, and what I would say is, um, that, um, that was an error. We should have included the Thornton's Ferry replacements, we should have included that. And so, that number will be adjusted to reflect those two classrooms.
So, estimate, now I'm just estimating, this is not the, the actual number. So, it will be reduced by, say, ten?
Right.
By, by five thousand dollars, say? Because the majority of it would have to stay for Thornton's, which would still bring us, you know, thirty-five thousand under default?
Right, it would still keep us under default, but it's a good catch, it was an error. Uh, if we keep, and we're going to talk about the, the, the four teachers and the Kias in a few minutes too. But if we were to keep them, then you're absolutely right, we would have to restore those two classrooms. And that's not reflected here, but it would still keep us well under default. Thank you.
Are there any other questions about option one? Cindy.
Um, as it relates to the Brentwood Building, um, is it possible to do something like how you winterize cottages? Or is there, is there a way to?
Yeah, there is.
So, there would be zero cost of?
Yes. What we can do, and we've talked to the fire department, John, Assistant Chief Manuelli. Uh, we, we talked with him about this. And you could, you could shut all the utilities off. You would have to go through and, and much in the way that, uh, people living in Florida get ready for a hurricane, you would have to board up all the windows, you'd have to board up all the doors. So, there's no, absolutely no access into that building. And then you would reclassify it as an abandoned building. So, if there were, for instance, a, a fire in there, the fire department would know that there are no people in that building, which is important for them to know that. So, yes, there is a way to do that, so we could just shut it down totally.
But if we did that, then the police wouldn't be able to continue using it.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Andy. Sorry, go ahead, you saw the mic until?
Afterthought, but if we did, then there would be in a, if we did board it up and make it an abandoned property. I'm not saying I support that, it's just a question.
Yeah.
Um, that we would also then be able to further reduce the operating budget by those utility?
By the twenty thousand that's in there, yes, correct. We probably need maybe like five grand to do the, the, the boarding up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Andy?
So, the Brentwood Building has been another one of those really interesting topics. We know that, uh, last year, the Budget Committee proposed, they put in a two thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollar placeholder to, to tear it down. Um, it was not, it was ultimately removed from the proposed, operating, proposed operating budget. Um, I know that we talked about doing that this year at Planning and Building to, that it was, that, remove it because we didn't see a viable use for it as part of the, the overall scheme regardless of our approach. Would be, it made sense for the amount that it was going to take to tear it down, but there was an assumption that the, to, they keep it running. to take to tear it down, but there was an assumption that the, to the keep it running cost, keep it functional, was about 40,000 dollars. What we found out in looking at the reviewing of the budget, it was closer to 20,000 to keep it going. So the difference between, so it's either you spend 160,000, 165,000 dollars to tear it down, or you spend 20,000 dollars to just keep it functioning so the police could use it for training, and we, it, it has some level of function to it. It's not an abandoned building. Or we spend 5,000 dollars to board it up and leave it sit there, potentially as a target for vandalism or something, who knows, because it's an abandoned building, right? So I think we as a board need to make a decision as to what we want to do with Brentwood for the coming year. And I mean, obviously, it's going to be discussed beyond that through planning and building and budget and things like that, but I think we as a board need to take a very specific position on Brentwood for the coming year. And for me, looking at this option of doing it is that while I would like to tear it down, I believe that until we go through the master plan discussion, that, and it's only 20,000 dollars to keep it up, and the police use it for training, and it has some level of value to the community, I'd be willing to support the removal of the tear down, but retaining the 27,000 dollars to keep it functioning during this budget year. So that's sort of my position on Brentwood.
Okay. So are there any other questions on option one? Let's go on to option two.
So option two is, again, it's everything Matt described about the windows. It's the replacement. It's what we just discussed about Brentwood, and actually, it's a lot to do with what we were just discussing about the master plan. And so happy to answer any questions that you have about the, this, the one difference here from the option one really is the master plan. So I think we understand the impacts.
Yes, we do.
Would we still adjust the? Will we still adjust the, the furniture account at Thornton's Ferry?
We, in every one of these, we'll have to adjust those.
In every one of these, okay.
Yeah. That was just an oversight.
So we'll, we'll, we'll touch that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Later.
And just guesstimating, that it would be like 10,000 instead of 16,460?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, that would be 5,000 reduced.
Right.
Gotcha, I'm sorry.
Reduction of 5,000.
Reduction by 5,000.
Yep.
Of, yeah. So Naomi, I believe your hand was up?
Could you talk a little bit about the furniture from a different perspective? And that is, in addition to the, the cost of the furniture itself, there's a, suppose a morale or personnel cost to being told that, no, you can't have three new science chairs because we're cutting the budget in a variety of ways. Is there a way that you can make that more tangible? Whether I'm right that that exists, or it's not an issue?
So I'll have my colleagues jump in.
Well, it's all around learning environment, you know, and, and we're trying to create the optimal learning environment. You've heard a lot around this table around universal design for learning and, and environment, and how important that is for learning. We spend a lot of times talking about that and doing that. Well, part of that is having appropriate functional furniture in, in that. You know, you heard from the elementary principals, I think they did a wonderful job describing some of the 50-year-old furniture at, at Reed's Ferry and Thornton's Ferry, and some of the things that have been there since the buildings existed. It's maintained, and, and our maintenance department welds, and they continue to make sure it's safe, and when it's not safe, we discard it. Again, it's one of those things where, yes, if you, if we don't put in some more replacement, it is, it is not going to change to a point of where we currently are, but it's not going to improve either. And it may, may within the course of the year, be two years older furniture than we have currently now.
So I want to elaborate on that by just sort of, and I had meant to sort of start my comments this way, but it's a good time. So really, you know, the budget that we put forth, we, we truly didn't give the board anything that we didn't think was either necessary, meaning an obligation, or important. And we're guided by a couple of things. Student safety, right? We have to ensure student safety, both physical and emotional, and then of course, academic needs. And so if at any point, if these were deferred, and at any point, there was a piece of furniture that broke in such a way as to not be able to be safely fixed, or that posed an injury threat to a child, that, that does happen on occasion. You know, a piece of metal goes a little screwy in a chair, and a little kid's exposed leg in the warmer months, you know, runs across it, then we would have to replace that. We're not going to put student, you know, nor would you, student safety in jeopardy. So, so we're not suggesting that by cutting these, that we would ever tolerate a situation where there would be anything unsafe. An unsafe could be a stool that's wobbly to the point where a child tips, so might not be cut on a piece, but if a child tips, I mean, you can fall three inches and really hurt yourself. And so we would also put that in that category. So I wouldn't want the board to think that what this meant is that students would be in unsafe conditions, because we wouldn't ever allow that. Things are really old. I think there's a perception that amongst some that, you know, we've got all kinds of really state-of-the-art things flying around in our district. That's just not the case, and I invite anybody to come and look to see that. It's not just me saying it. So things do have to get fixed and replaced, but I just want to be clear that we're not talking about student safety.
Are there any other questions on this option? Seeing none, on to the next.
So this, again, includes the windows that Matt described. I'm going to ask John first to talk about the system of care coordinator.
Thank you, Mark. I spoke a little bit about this during the budget time last week when student services budget was presented. It was one of the questions that was proposed to our Director of Student Services, Heather Barker. And a few years ago, I'm going to go back a little bit, a few years ago, I sat in front of the board and the community and talked about our mental health group. And Laura Libby, our behavior specialist, behavior specialist at the upper elementary school, wore a backpack, and she talked about what kids come to school in their backpack every day, and how that's changed over the years for us. And we really have a situation with kids with, from traumatic experiences, from kids that really need some more help and care than we did years ago in our schools. And we talked a lot about that. And at that time, after that first presentation, the board asked point-blankly, what can we do to help you, and how do we support you? And at that time, we didn't have a financial need, and we continued to study and look at research and look at best practice out in the field. And we continued this for the period of now five years. And our first impact was last year, when we put forth a social-emotional curriculum from pre-K through fifth grade. And that, we're seeing some of those positive impacts that I'll report later on this year. I'll bring a team forward and talk about what has our experience been to implement this across our district. But it's been fairly positive. We've also expanded with putting forth a, you know, multiple committees across our district, looking and studying parent outreach and doing events for parents, and, and putting together a, a resource guide on our website and vetting that and doing that. We've done a lot to expand what's happening. We've brought teams together through collaboration days throughout our district. This is all part of building our system of care. So we're looking at the classroom, the schools, and the homes and the communities as a whole, and going to that researched model around UCLA's castle model. And we've really been researching and doing this work. Well, part of that to come full circle is to create a position, it's called the system of care coordinator. It's looking at all those different factors and saying, all right, now, how does this all function? Julie DeLuca, give her a ton of credit for the efforts and the work that she's done to help lead this and start this, along with Fern Saito and Laura Libby, and many other, many other committee members, including myself, Lauren Doro. We've done a lot of work on, on our time to do some of this work, to bring it forward. It's come to a point where it's grown to keep this system rolling and to look at our, to look at our school-wide curriculums, our school-wide practices, our policies, and our family and community partnerships, and then our connections to other schools that we've talked about with our, our regional system of care. How do we do that? And I think one of those things was this position. So is there an impact? Yes, there's an impact because it's going to move us forward and, and bring more cohesion towards our transitions in schools. However, without it, where it would be, we'd be where we are today. We've continued the people that I mentioned, continue to do the effort, and we continue to help improve the well-being of our students in our classrooms and creating better learning environments, and teaching those, those self-awareness skills, those self-management skills, those social awareness skills, those relationship skills, and those responsible decision-making skills to our students.
Are there any questions on this option? Um, yes, Andy?
That item or the whole option?
Oh, that, I'm sorry, because we, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Because we do have a couple other things.
You're right, sorry.
No, that's fine. But we're happy to. If I, could I just say one thing?
Of course you can.
Uh, so it, it might be that in the future, this becomes an item that we discuss at a board, at a board meeting, whether this relates to the budget or not, but, you know, you don't have to look far. If you looked at a recent Concord Monitor article, there was a very big discussion about what people in Concord are experiencing in their school district. The phenomena that we're describing is not unique to Merrimack, and it is qualitatively different right now to be a teacher and a learner in schools than it used to be. So if I compare what my time in school was when I was in kindergarten, first, second grade, it, it's just, it bears no resemblance to what life is like now. And we don't talk about that a lot because it's rude. I think of my mother, you know, it's a little rude, because you don't, we, we talk about confidentiality. We don't want to expose the, the challenges that some families are experiencing. Or we certainly don't want to highlight or point out the challenges that individual students are experiencing. So we don't frequently come, ever come to the board and talk about it. And I'm beginning to think that that might be somewhat in error because it gives maybe the false impression that the experience of many students now is exactly what people would have remembered in the past. That is just not the case. I can't explain it culturally, I don't know why, but we have younger and younger students expressing significant behavior challenges daily. Can you imagine police calls to an elementary school because of students that are literally not containable? This is not a, a once-in-awhile occurrence. So I want to just give our teachers and our administrators a lot of credit for adapting to the changes that have happened daily, and we don't talk about it. But the fact that we don't talk about it doesn't mean it doesn't happen. And so I, we don't, do we need a system of care coordinator? No. The board offered support to us years ago, and we said we were going to come back to you, and we had some data, and now we have some data. But as John said, the progress that we need to make and want to make will be somewhat delayed. That's the impact.
Cindy?
Just a point of clarification, so in, in regards to what you're discussing regarding the behavioral and the trending of the behavioral issues. From what I read, I mean, this is not unique to our district. This is just society today. So for anyone who's listening at home, it's, it's not just that Merrimack is seeing this, that it is.
Absolutely right. It's, it's just, it's literally everywhere. And, and, you know, I, part of the reason why, and I, it's awkward to talk about because, you know, it's a fabulous community with wonderful families and wonderful children, and we take them all, not all school entities, take all kids, we do. And we welcome them all, all the time, with everything that they bring. But let's not be under any illusion that what they bring now is the same thing that they brought, you know, 10 years ago, five years ago, much less 20 or 30 years ago. And it's, and the daily experience of our teachers and the amount of training that they need in order to manage their classrooms, to provide safe classrooms, and to provide experiences for students where we still expect them to, you know, have, to meet and exceed their academic goals. I mean, it's a lot. It is a lot. They've chosen it, they're in it, then nobody's making anybody be teachers, but we can't at the same time say that it's the experience that it used to be, because it's just not.
Brandy?
With all due respect, I have to severely disagree with you when you say that it's not needed. I believe that this position is definitively needed in our district. I have, I have three kids in three different buildings, and I can, there aren't enough words to express my gratitude for all that the administration goes through in each building, teachers included. And there is an array of behaviors that come from all different children that are in each of our buildings, and the need is definitively there and present. So this would be something on our options to cut. This is not an option for me. I think that this is something that is needed across our district and all of the schools, some schools more than others. But I think if we cut this, we are going backwards, and I think we really need to try and move forward, and this I see as a need, not as an option.
Yeah, absolutely. I have, I wanted to add a little bit too, but I want you to go first, absolutely.
I just want to be clear, I'm trying to make, I think it is needed, but I'm trying to make a distinction because there's a very healthy debate going on right now, and I want to be very clear. By needed, I mean, it's not a contractual obligation. There's not a state requirement that makes us have it. So by needed, I mean, we're not mandated to have it, required to have it, in that sense. Needed in every other way that you just articulated, yes, I would agree with you, 100%.
John?
And also, when we sat today, and we sat for a few hours today and went through and did this, and, and one of the things that I think is just to clarify on that too, is if we have an existing position in district right now, well, that's in part of our default budget. This is a new position. So therefore, it is in that parameter about what can we cut? And it falls into that line. And, and believe me, I think I, I went on long there about my explanation, but I think that I do see the need, as close as I have, I've, I've been in this district, this is my 20th season in this district, in multiple positions. And I think that I have watched the impact of this on the, what we would call that typical classroom, as Mark described, increase where it was maybe one or two disruptions without the course of the day. We're talking multiple within an hour, never mind a day right now. And that's where the shift and changes come.
Mm-hmm. Cindy?
Well, and that, that impacts class size as well, when you have changing behaviors that we've seen.
There's not, it's not a coincidence that we have put forth a request for four teachers, and we've kept them at kindergarten and grade one. I mean, there's a reason for that, and we'll talk about that later, but there is a reason for that. Not just because of, of what we're seeing in Merrimack and everywhere else, but also because, and I said this the other night, that even if that weren't so, there is a lot of credible evidence to suggest that if you put your energies and your resources at building a strong foundation, by that I mean K1, 2, then you more likely have students who will be successful, and that's the humane thing to do, and it also has a cost impact because that's less remediation down the line. So Marge Chaffrey used to say, pay me now or pay me later. But at some point, without a strong foundation, so, so in addition to the increased enrollment that we've seen, and the dramatically increased rates of dysregulated behavior, in addition to those reasons, we also have that larger goal of building a solid, a solid foundation.
Yep. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I mean, I agree with Brandy as it relates to that position, and I also agree as it relates to the work that we're doing with the mental health committee. So when I'm looking at the budget cuts, my first priority is to cut things that are not impacting learning and not, that are not impacting our students in a strong and meaningful way, as long as it's not safety-related. But having said- But having said that, may I ask another question on this option?
Absolutely not, please do.
Um, on the windows, um, is it, is it possible to break that out? Um, or is that something we could consider putting on a warrant article, the two sixty-five? It would get it out of the operating budget, um, it would let the public decide if they want to do the windows. If not, then we would revisit it, you know, um, in a future year.
If the board chooses to break that out of the operating budget and create a warrant article, that's perfectly.
Or could we at least just get a draft of a warrant article while you're going through that process, and then we can decide that?
Okay.
When we discuss, is at least, it might open up some options for the board.
Yep, and, and I just want to go back just for a second to the system of care coordinator, and this is something, you're right. Um, it really is no surprise to us that this is here, because of everything that we've heard in the last five years. Um, but what I really, 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 really want to do is, um, take out the misinformation about what this district does with its, uh, Mental Health Committee, and what this position would do. Because if I hear one more time that we're a mental institution, I'm not sure I have the patience. Um, so I will actually, if you don't mind, and bear with me, everyone, I have a better voice than last week, so it won't sound nearly as bad. But, um, I'm going to read, uh, the position summary for starters. "The system of care coordinator will facilitate, monitor, and educate staff on current practices that build a system of care in the Merrimack community." "This includes facilitating and collaborating as part of the district's Mental Health Committee, and connecting families to resources beyond the schools, not in the schools, beyond them." So I am just going to go through a couple of the essential functions and responsibilities. So coordinate with building administration staff and parents to establish the school mental health committees at each of the district committees, and each of the six school-based committees. Communicate with, train, update building, and district mental health committees, so again, current trends, um, just more of an education. Understand current policies and practices regarding student wellness, safety, bullying, and Title IX. Um, we know we hear bullying a lot, so I had to, um, obviously mention bullying. Identify gaps between what is and what could be. Coordinate with mental health committees to ensure the school environments reflect improvements in, uh, to system of care. Promote the value of those policies to school staff, students, families, and community members. Facilitate a comprehensive planning process in the district focused on student wellness and social-emotional needs. So again, creating an environment, but not creating a treatment plan. Ensure all student wellness activities are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally and linguistically competent. From technical, um, assistance providers to determine gaps in the healthy eating and physical activity environments of each K eight twelve school building. Uh, collaborate work with technical assistance providers to develop action plans addressing barriers and gaps in healthy eating and physical activity environments in the school buildings. I may have skipped something wrong, I really do feel like I did. Um, collaborate with multiple partners and teams effectively. Uh, implement student and staff mental wellness programs and activities. Um, again, that's not therapy, nor is it a session. Uh, participate in monthly meetings with community partners and technical assistance providers. Assist the district in identifying potential resources for improved by acting, uh, as the leader for all grant processes in support of student wellness, from application through implementation. And again, what we're talking about here is creating a good learning environment for students of all abilities, uh, to cope and manage. But it is not diagnosis, it is not treatment, and it is not, um, it is not, uh, designed to be that environment for that, but to find resources when those are needed for our students outside of the district. So with that, I think, you know, when you're talking about student outcomes, if a student is not capable of learning in a classroom because of these influences from outside, um, you know, their social-emotional wellness, having coping mechanisms, having, um, training on how to best create those learning environments, this is necessary. And again, because at the end of the day, if we give you an environment that does not allow you to manage that environment, but we expect improved student outcomes year over year, um, that's not fair to the administration and the teachers, um, who are tasked with making those students the best possible, um, producers of, of content as they can. So we can't just look at reading, writing, and arithmetic anymore. Those days, unfortunately, um, you know, we talk about the good old days, it's much bigger than that. And on top of that, you know, when you're talking about this budget as a whole, reading, writing, arithmetic is not competitive enough to get you to where you want to go in this world. You need to have college and career readiness, and it goes beyond three Rs. So this is a very complex process, complex book, but when you're talking about how to create an environment to optimize that, without having the, the resources in place for you to be able to do that, we're pretty much asking you to, um, to create a, an outcome that was with your hands tied behind your back. And that's not fair to you, that's not fair to our students. At, at the end of the day, that's not fair to our students to not be able to, to take the time, um, to vet a, a position that will impro- that can improve that. So I, I think personally, I'm dead set against cutting that in any of the proposals right now, because you've given us enough data over the last five years to show its relevance. Yep?
So first of all, thank you, um, and on behalf of the teachers who work very hard every day, I thank you. I, I just have, uh, one other, or two other kind of side points. I want to just draw attention to the fact that it is a worthy goal to get under default, I completely agree. And I'm trying to, I would like to demonstrate that, um, this particular option gets us twenty-one dollars over default, so where it is not easy, I think there is a perception that it is, but it is not easy to find considerable chunks of money, even in a budget this big. And so to get under default in this option, it only, with the system of care person included, it only gets us to twenty-one dollars under default. So it's an illustration of the complexity of achieving this goal, not, not that it's not a worthy goal, but it's not an easy goal. The other thing that I just think bears, repeating off of what Chair Barnes said, is schools are unique places in that, um, we, we, unlike maybe other entities, I don't know, we, we cannot, um, be static. I wish that we could be more proactive sometimes than we are, but the fact of the matter was, we're reactive in many cases, because today, there is likely to be a, an impact in a family or with a particular child that will, that will impact our need to deliver services tomorrow. We, we have to be able to be flexible and dynamic to respond to that. Um, so, for instance, um, we aren't asking for a system of care coordinator, because we're anticipating in five years, there's going to be a need to coordinate care. We are in the middle of a crisis in our community and other communities in the state. I'm not trying to exaggerate it, you just have to spend a couple of days in any school to see what we're talking about. And so we're responding to what we're given. Just like if a family moves into Merrimack, and they have a medically fragile child, we have to be dynamic enough, uh, to be able to welcome that child and give that child everything he or she needs. We can't say we can't take you, or you're too sick for us, um, we can't do that, just can't. So there is a lot that we have to be reactive by, and we, and there has to be some degree of, of either reactivity or flexibility. And so this is a case where we're not seeking, we wish that we weren't needing, but we do. Along with that, uh, infrastructure and personnel, so we've got windows. Uh, another, uh, example of infrastructure in this particular option is the Merrimack Middle School drainage. And Matt, can you just speak to that, please?
Yeah, this is to, um, take care of the condition at the upper field at the middle school, where even though during construction, um, we dug down at least a foot, foot and a half to replace the material that's there. The material that's there is, um, a clay, so even though there is good soil and good wicking material, once it hits the clay, um, i- it kind of traps water there. So when you have a hill coming down, the hill usually leaches water onto the field, and from that point, it just kind of takes off and permeates the entire field. So with this here, um, you would be creating a big, um, drain system that would stop at the bottom of the hill before the water got to the field. Uh, it would be, um, a big, probably twelve-inch corrugated pipe that ran underneath the ground, and then it would spill off in an appropriate location. So would, it would take the water that's coming off the hill, trap it in the pipe, and pull it away from the field before it had a chance to permeate the field. Last year, because of the, um, the, um, springtime that we had, it was awfully wet, we got very little use out of that field. Um, this is here as a cut, because it's here as a cut, and, um, it's, it's something that would help us as a stage one perhaps, or a stage done. But it is here as offering up as a cut, and that's probably why it's on option three.
Cindy, is your hand up?
Yeah. So I do have a question regarding that particular item, um, and maybe it's just the way that I perceive things, but when we went through some of our conversations last week, and over our budget conversations regarding that particular item, I wasn't left with the feeling that by doing that, it would necessarily fix the problem. And so that's kind of a concern I have about that particular item, in that, is it a seventy-five thousand dollar experiment? Do we feel pretty confident that if we did put the seventy-five thousand dollars, that it would work? Or are we just, are we fighting Mother Nature, and there's?
Mother Nature is tough. We're, we're fairly confident that it would work. However, if it doesn't do the job to our satisfaction, it still will make things a lot better. And if you need to do, if you needed to do additional work, this would needed, need to be done as a step one anyway. So we would take the pi- let's say, we put the pipe in, it's like eighty percent of what we need. So now we have to look at putting underground drainage in the field. So, but we would still need that pipe there.
You know what would help me on this particular item? Um, is under, getting a better understanding with data on, over the last two or three years, you know, what percentage of the time was the field not usable? Um, what, I know last year was a particular bad season, but if we look back for like two or three years, is it historically been fifty, available fifty percent of the time we would need it? Um, I just don't have, um, again, like a solid understanding of what that, um, issue is based on the facts. So I just feel like I need more information on that item.
We can, we can get that from, uh, Mike Susi.
Mike Susi.
Yep. Then, uh, just also, uh, a kind of infrastructure is in that same option three would be the coral risers at, uh, Merrimack High School. And Matt, do you want to just, uh?
Yeah, these are put into the budget, they've been in the budget before, um, they're older risers, um, there is, um, a safety concern to them, um, but we feel they could pro- perhaps go another year. But again, it's, it's on option number three, because it's, uh, the least desirable, um, cut that we would care to make.
And then just to round that out, binding of books, um, we put in because, uh, it's a small amount, eight hundred dollars, but it, it gets us to our goal of under default, and so, so that's primarily infrastructure and personnel.
Are there any other questions? Now I let them get through option three, on option three, sorry about that.
Okay.
Andy?
I'm going to press on the risers just a little bit more. You say it's been, I, I don't know that I recall seeing this before, but that's okay, if it was there, it was there. Is it really a safety issue? I mean, I, I want to be sure, because it's, I'm, I'm considering something here, but I need to understand exactly, is it really a safety issue, or is this, uh, I mean, I just need to understand, I, I, it needs to be yes or no.
So, um, here's where they are, um, I actually lived through this, um, ten years ago at Master Cola, so I can talk about the difference in the newer risers. The, the old risers don't have backs to them, and it's simply just a three-tier riser with the top step. If you're on that top step, that's it, there's nothing behind you.
So it's sort of like in, the same question with the ADA, with the Smith, with the bleachers. They're not structurally unsound, it's just that a newer design might be a little safer just for kids standing there versus a problem with what's currently there.
And the newer risers have a, a, a surrounded back, so it's actually a safer.
Sure.
It's a safer mechanism to allow you to be on those for a while and standing and sitting.
Okay.
And I would, what John said is true, um, in conversations I've had with Mrs. Putney, she'd go a little further, and she, she would say that, um, structurally, um, they are really at the end of their useful life, which theoretically means, uh, that they might not be usable next year. And if they were part of the cut, uh, there would have to be a, some sort of, uh, potentially, likely makeshift something until we got them. So I would say what John said is true, and I think Mrs. Putney would tell you that, um, there is actually a structural challenge that they have now, because they are the originals, and therefore quite old.
Well, I'll give an anecdotal, and that is I remembered a celebration of song when my kids were younger, so, um, and there was a kid that did fall off the top riser, and he was okay. But, you know, I, it was just one of those, you know, you, that's when you realize there wasn't a back. So, but, and they, they happened to be near pads, there were pads behind them, because I think it was probably wrestling mats or something, but literally, I watched a kid fall off the back of them, and he was probably at the time, fifth, sixth grade.
Right.
So, when they do Celebration of Song, they're doing it at the high school, so using the high school facilities. So, nope, uh, so it's happened. Um, so I totally understand where you're coming from there too. Um, so just my two cents. Are there any other questions on this option? On to option four?
So this, as we indicated, was, uh, curriculum-guided student experiences and remedial support, so, uh, plus infrastructure. So again, includes the windows at the high school. Um, and, um, these are, uh, art, science, and social studies field trips across the district. And, um, so we, they are field trips, um, but, you know, there's a lot of, um, uh, more clarity in the use of the term curriculum-guided student experiences. So at my earlier introduction, I, I described what they are. So, uh, this is everything from, uh, going to see how maple sugar is made, um, to seeing, uh, real art at the Courier Museum, to learning about civics when you go to the State House in Concord. Um, so these aren't just, I mean, they're fun, because school is supposed to be fun, but in addition to their being fun, they're all related to the curriculum. Um, but, you know, they're not essential in that they're not state-mandated or required by any minimum standard. Um, and so, so, uh, that, but, um, it is one of the options that we would have to entertain to get to a goal, and we're prepared to do it. Um, as I indicated, transitional academic support that, um, involves the three, uh, the three programs that are comprised of that Evening Academy, summer reading, the, uh, former Spring Board to Success, which is now un- gracefully called eight point five.
Something new next year.
Yeah, 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 and then, um, also credit recovery. Um, and, uh, and, and so John described that the other day. I'm sure if you have other questions for John, you can describe those to you about impacts, John?
So I think that impacts is something Mark said to please look at today when, when we talk about this, and I think just that, um, you know, elementary summer school, of course, we talked about summer loss a lot last week, and talked about what that meant, that over those eight to ten weeks of summer, kids aren't reading, and this, um, you know, or aren't reading with instruction, the students that may be near, near, um, near or below grade level. And this is an opportunity for those eighty-eight students who came last year to have an experience. Um, our Evening Academy, another seven students who may need credit recovery. Without this program, they, those seventy students wouldn't get credit recovery. Same thing with the forty-eight students over the summer that come to our summer school credit recovery, they wouldn't get that opportunity. And the sixty-eight students who came to our eight point five, who needed a little more boost, um, to be ready for high school, wouldn't get that experience if we cut this program.
So I, I would just say one thing, I think we asked the administration of Merrimack High School to come before us and talk about graduation rates, and what you're going to do to get them to a hundred percent. And so how are we supposed to do that if we take that out? So again, what's the impact to our graduation rates? And, you know, again, when we talk about student outcomes being the paramount of this role, uh, you're, all of our roles at this table, more so yours, obviously, on the hands-on, us on the, I, you know, on the governance of it. But how, how do we bring you to a table, ask you to improve student outcomes and, and graduation rates, and then tell you that you don't have the tools to do it? So very uncomfortable with this. So just, just putting it out there, that's, that's my personal position, I, I think there might be other comments too. Cindy?
Well, and along the same vein, I think for option four, in my opinion, you can just take a pen and put a big X right across it, um, with the exception of what we want to do about those windows, and the- do about those windows and the charter school bus, which we already discussed in our earlier conversations, that it's been a placeholder for a number of years that we haven't needed. So it's kind of maybe a no-brainer on that one. But as far as all the field trips and particularly the academic support, I will never support, um, taking that academic support away. That kind of work is just critical to the outcomes that we need in this district. And I, I mean, I, I know the field trips have come up before in the past, even before me and, um, it, they never, that was something that just never got caught, you know, when it was brought up before. So I, I'm absolutely like.
Except for the bus. A little circle on the bottom, a little circle on the top. And I feel the same exact way because honestly, when we talk about the, um, the field trips, I think for some of these students, uh, I'd say for all of these students, some of these field trips are a unique, unique opportunity that they will not get at home. You're not going to get greeted at the State House in a tour to the, to the extent that these students get through their school district. I cannot walk in and get that same experience for my child. Um, and no one, no one really can, um, unless you're a soon newcomer, I guess, because technically, you know, your dad's there all the time. But on that note, um, you know, we, we really need to make sure that we have the opportunity for the, for our students to get those experience. And some of them, again, I think a lot of my questions this year about the haves and the have-nots. And, you know, as we're talking about this budget, um, I just want to remind you that we were lucky enough last year to get a donation from the, um, unknown Powerball winner and thank you again, because we have homeless students. We have about 30 on average. And I don't know what this year's number is, but it's loomed around this 30 number in the past. And so there are have-nots in our ranks and we do our best to let them, um, just be on equal footing and every day that they're in our buildings and, and feel like that's their place where they can thrive. So again, as we're taking these things away, it's taking away experiences that they probably will never see if, if they don't, um, have it through the school district. So I am very uncomfortable with that. I am, uh, of the same mindset as, as Cindy with the windows and the same mindset as Cindy with the bus. Um, and I guess the only question I have with the bus is, God forbid, that we have, uh, students that are requiring the bus. What would be the plan for that if we don't budget it? Is, I mean, how many students could we possibly be talking about and how would we do that?
Well, thing is, um, I'm not sure how many students, but we would have to get transportation. We'd have to pull it from our, our regular transportation line and, um, hope there's a saving somewhere else in the budget that we could capture.
Okay.
So we'd have to do it.
Yep. I'm comfortable with it though. That's, that's one area I think because it, it's, has the potential to not be used as much as it has the potential to be used. Um, and we have had, as we know, uh, surpluses because based on the way we budget, we, we do it the right way. So there's a consistent surplus, 41,000 I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with. So are there any other comments on option four? Cause Andy's been mathing over there quite a bit. I think we're all mathing a lot. So I'm trying to run the meeting math a little bit, but, uh, there's some math going on over here too. Um, so are there any thoughts about what was brought forward? Oh, of course, of course. I don't want you to go without saying your piece.
So, um, I just, I just wanted to kind of round this out by, uh, saying that the obvious thing to talk about would be the, the four teachers and the kindergarten assistants, um, which have, are the reason that we're over default. And so I don't want to lose the opportunity to act as if that's off the table. I get that it is not. I didn't in, um, include those in these four because I, we wouldn't have put them in the budget if we didn't feel strongly that we, that we needed them. However, as with anything here, I appreciate this, you know, we appreciate the sentiments of the board, but whatever the board, um, sees fit to do, we will make work. We always do and we will, including, uh, the teachers. However, I just want to, um, make sure that we understand, and if you haven't got access to this, I'll give them to you again, but, so we have the, um, class size and the ratios, um, before the addition of the four teachers and after the addition of the four teachers. And, um, in, in general, um, what I would say is this, um, we, the difference doesn't seem dramatic by adding four teachers in terms of the ratios, but remember what we've told you, that there is a demonstrable increase in enrollment. 109 students have added themselves to Merrimack since, across the grades since October 1st with more every day and we're glad about it. It's not a problem. We're glad about it. It just presents challenges. Couple that with what we shared about, um, the challenges that many of these students have and the impact on behavior and academics, coupled with a goal to build a strong foundation. So, um, the, um, differences, let's say at grade one, go from 20, 20, and 23 to 16, 17, and 19, remembering what the state minimum standards are and their, um, their, um, strong suggestion that we, um, meet or exceed them, by exceed, I mean, get below them, that's exceeding, strange, but that's the, the way. Um, and at Thornton's Ferry, it's the difference between, um, uh, 16, uh, 19 students in kindergarten without the additional teacher and 16 students in kindergarten. So, um, those numbers seem like, well, you can deal. Can we? Yes. Do we always? Yes. And those numbers will change. Thornton's Ferry is the most dynamic school at the moment in terms of population. But, uh, we're bumping up against some real challenges. This is not a luxury. But if we, if, if it's the position of the board not to, totally understandable, but, um, I guarantee you next year, I'll be telling you, I, we, there won't be a, we'll get through another year. Uh, it'll be, we can't get through another year. And, um, straight up, that's the truth. So anyway, I'm happy to give those to you if you need to, um, see the ratios again. So. I also have a question that, um, Board Member Schneider asked last week that I'm prepared to answer to.
Oh, right. You did ask something last week for this week. Okay. Well, if you wouldn't mind, we'd love it. Thank you.
Well, can I ask a question about this? So one of the things is the ratios that you provided us, and again, this, it would be good to share this so the public has access to this table that I'm not, that we got. The, the modified numbers of population based on actuals that you have for students, change the needle on the first grade in terms of the overall population, didn't on the kindergarten, but did on the first grade. So if I were to, so my first thought is, is that the town of Merrimack has given us a bit of a ticking time bomb when it comes to a lot of the housing that's being built. We can't really forecast exactly what the impact will be, except there will be an impact. And we can't ignore that fact. We could put our head in the sands and say, oh, well, suck it up. But the reality is especially at the younger grades, there's a problem that's, that's brewing here and there really aren't any other options. Kindergarten, there's, one could argue that there potentially is options with other private kindergartens that are still within town, but as well as our public offering. If I were to consider, me personally, looking at what you just described in terms of, of potential modification, if I were to take your proposed four teachers and three instructional assistants, the only thing that I would entertain in terms of a discussion would be the, the extra kindergarten teacher at Thornton's, only because based on the projections, it is the least growing area. The first grades and, and above are growing and I don't think we can afford not to do those. But if I were to look at, at modifying what your proposal is, the only one I'd entertain is the kindergarten, because some have said it's, it's bloated staffing, some would say we're way over. And my, can, my statement is, is that we would be foolish as a board to ignore what we're seeing in front of us. And that's me being here for a while, so.
So what I would, what I would say, so I would, I would not share that opinion. But more, more importantly, it's not about me. I would ask if that's what the board wanted to consider, I think it would be absolutely necessary to have, um, Mrs. DeLuca, uh, to come, um, and speak to you, uh, because I couldn't in conscience, um, tell you that that would be, uh, I mean, you decide whether it's okay, but I couldn't speak for her and tell you it's okay. I would need her to speak to you directly. I would hope that you'd allow that because she really, um, again, that is the mo-, you know, we have, um, part of the problem, and this gets somewhat to what we're going to talk about in a few minutes about high school. We project in the fall, let's say for staffing at the high school, months before the first student even chooses a course for next year. So we have no idea how many students want to take X, Y, or Z. And yet in the previous fall, we're projecting what that might be. Similarly, we have students, and John is a former, uh, uh, elementary assistant principal and principal can tell you, we have families who register for kindergarten up to the day before school and throughout the year. So we're projecting a need based on a sense that we have in October that has already changed. And the principals, uh, reported to the board last week that those, I mean, daily we have families, um, registering even at kindergarten. And Thornton's Ferry is by far the most dynamic part of town at the moment, um, because it has so many of the extended stay places, which I said last week, it's not accurate at all to say that, uh, those families come in for a week and leave and maybe come back two weeks later and stay for a month and leave. Some do, most do not. When they are residents of those places, they are permanent residents for years. We have many families at, um, those, uh, residences in South Merrimack that are there for multiple years. Again, not making this up, that's just factual stuff. So, so I would say to you that at a minimum, Mrs. DeLuca would really have to be able to tell you what her firsthand experience is at Thornton's.
So my, so I think I, I would like to find if there's anybody else that, on this board's table, that is of the same belief of mine with a kindergarten teacher, because if I'm the lone wolf, it makes no sense to bring her because there's not going to be any traction to do any further. But for purpose of discussion, I'm willing to have that discussion if anybody else in the board would be. So I think let's start there before we go down any rat hole.
Well, um, I will, I'd be glad to poll the board. I will start with myself and I would not be supportive of such a cut. Um, the one thing we can say about public schools is we aren't in a position to tuition anyone if, or, or have a lottery or any of that when it comes to public education. So the only place we really have that luxury is in pre-k. So once they get into kindergarten, they are ours, um, if they enroll and they are resident, they are ours. And so for that reason, I think we've shown enough of an instability in, um, population growth where it's not going to happen onesie twosies. We can even have, you know, and I, I am just really not comfortable knowing that we are still dealing with responsible ratios of students to teachers with that position specifically in place, that, um, they're not, I would not call them boutique, um, ratios, they are responsible ratios. Um, that would not be very supportive of that. But that's my personal opinion, but then I'll go down the line. So Cindy?
Um, I agree with your opinion, um, particularly, I, when you think of what is involved with a kindergarten teacher and having, um, those kids in that classroom all day. Um, so I, I'm, I agree with you there, but I do have a question and it's regarding, um, it's kind of a weird question, but, um, the need for the kindergarten teachers, right? I wouldn't want the public to feel like they're getting a one-two punch, because we just recently implemented full-day kindergarten. Do we feel comfortable that the staffing was right or is it specifically, is this request specifically tied to recent population increases and projections? So that's what I want a little more insight about. Did, do, you know, is it that it's, if, well, I'll just stop there and you can explain.
So what I, so I would say it's two things. The, um, enrollment, I can't, you know, I can't overstate. So we, again, we were here and then for 10 years, we were this way. Hmm, no, for eight years, we were this way. For maybe two years, we were kind of like this. And now we're kind of spiking. That'll probably, well, again, we have NESDEC that tells us to expect 50 to 60 students per year for the next five years, which is as far as you're willing to progress. So that's that. So that's number one. Number two, I think that what, uh, and again, I'm hesitant to talk about this because it, I, it, I just, I don't want to be exposing of families and needs and challenges. But, um, I think what we see is a greater emotional need for more students perhaps than we anticipated. And, um, and so, um, that requires, whenever you have a challenging class, you know, it's better to have a low student-teacher ratio because kids need attention. Notwithstanding that kindergarten, you know, I mean, they literally come in in September and they, they don't quite know how to blow their nose or, you know, tie their shoes and blow their nose. I mean, it takes a long time to get their jackets off. This is just life. Now add to that significant, um, in many cases, emotional challenges and, and sometimes cognitive and what have you, and we see a need. So what I would tell you is that I think the projections were accurate at the time. What we've learned is that the profile is maybe a little different than we thought. And, but I, you know, but we, we, we love them all, we want them all, we support them all, it's all good, but it's probably a little different than we anticipated. I would, that would be my answer coupled with enrollment.
So again, I talked about my, my longevity and, and some of that, I watched expansion from, from preschool, from one building to two buildings, now to three buildings over that time. And in that, our numbers, um, dramatically increased every year. And I, and as I, I, I talked about last week, I came money times late in the year to say, here go my numbers again. I may have been a little off here and we're getting a lot of enrollments and we have a large population of need in our preschool. So it's only natural to think if we've had a large population of need over the last three years in our preschool, well, that need now is coming into our kindergarten classrooms. And we've had to support that and this, this board and this district has been absolutely wonderful in supporting that expansion. And, um, we're, we're one of the, um, strongest preschool programs in our area, because we also sit and talk a lot to the other districts around us and we've been able to really do a lot with early intervention in doing that. And, um, part of that now, this is the next iteration of some early intervention for students so we can help give them that solid foundation Mark talked about. But it's been coming and I think that it's here now. And this is kind of what the reality of our numbers support it, our projections support it, but we've watched that increase at our preschool level over, over the last five years. So it just happens to be hitting now.
Well, you make a good point there because, um, although some of it is unknown until that first day of school, like you mentioned, but we have some visibility into part of the picture. We already know the kids, unless they move out of the district, um, that we're going to need to support, um, which I hadn't really thought of it from that perspective before, but that, that does help me.
And I think the one thing as well is, um, you're talking about private kindergarten options that were plentiful when we had part-time kindergarten. When we had no kindergarten, uh, those numbers were dwindling. So there's not really a lot of external options for specifically for kindergarten programs. So that's why we've become more of a dependent facility. And again, we're not in a position, nor are we in, in, um, have an inclination to want to turn anyone away, but, um, honestly, there are fewer programs than there were even two years ago. So because of the, the, uh, the evolution to full day. And the one thing I know that we talked about at the beginning of the year, and I, I think what's important to also talk about, and we talked about a little bit in budgets, we talked about the curriculum that they're getting and the full day of learning that they're getting, and it's not naps and snacks all day. And at the end of the year, and it was presented to us in, in June, these students were reading to us. So kindergarten students read to us.
Right.
Things that they wrote in class, they read to us. And where you came from and where you are couldn't have been done without that curriculum and that full-day instruction. So again, you know, not boutique levels of ratios, but, you know, responsible levels of ratios are, I think what, what you have in your budget right now. So I would not be open, another reason I'm not open. But again, even if we said no, where are they going? So, yep. Uh, Cindy?
Well, and I think one other point too is, you know, um, going to full-day kindergarten, we were not the first district to jump on board there. I don't know how many are left in the state, what percentage approximately, um, but from anything that I've looked at, eyeballed, I feel like we were one of the last ones, um, to kind of move. to kind of move in that direction as a community. So, I don't know if you have any insights there, but it's just, it does put perspective.
You're definitely right about that. I, we can get more, but you're definitely right about.
And then you bring out the country, that's a whole different story.
Right.
I just feel like the rest of the country, I have the impression, from what I've seen, that the rest of the country is more progressive than New Hampshire as it relates to full-day kindergarten. But I'll go look back at that data. I am interested to know exactly kind of where we stand now at this point in time. But, but yeah, your thoughts on New Hampshire as it relates to full-day kindergarten?
So, I, I'll start. John, you know, you did a lot of that work.
Yeah, so I did a lot of that work, and we are, I think, you know, I don't have exact, I don't want to say we're like, you know, the last of five. I don't have that kind of data. I just, with me, but I would tell you, in our region, we are, we were one of the last ones to adopt full-day kindergarten. And I think we spent many years before the adoption of half-day kindergarten. And then, again, Kim Yala and a wonderful group of parents really did a lot of work together around, around this iteration of full-time kindergarten. And I think that they did a lot of research about what was in the area. They visited multiple programs to see what else was offered and where it was offered. And, and took a lot of advice from others that, that had some experience here. So, I think the question Cindy originally asked about, did we underestimate? I think we estimated based on what we went out and saw. And I think so it was. So, it was factual information we went out and gathered. We're having an impact in Merrimack where our numbers are rising, and that's the difference.
It's also, excuse me, it's also, I think, worth mentioning that this, you know, we had a lot of community members, particularly families with younger kids, who, who talked about the presence or the introduction of full-day kindergarten in Merrimack as what, one of the things that makes this a dynamic and attractive town for, for families with children. You know, there were a lot of people who, I mean, you all know because they, some came and spoke to you, and, and they felt strongly about that. So, this was another case where, you know, there is a kind of a need. And a need expressed, a need asked for. And so, you know, years and years of research and effort that went into the studying, you and Marge and Kim and Bryde and Julie and so on, to get to the point where we had some data to talk about it. But I mean, we can't ignore that fact as well. That was a critical component. Not the only component, but that was a critical component.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I kind of took us off on a tangent there. But it does kind of feed into the history, and I wanted to make sure it was clarified, particularly where this need is coming from.
Mm-hmm.
You know, is it residual, or is it just based on what we see going forward? And I think you've answered that question.
Great.
And just on the idea of Andy's consideration of the position, if I could just go down to the table and get your feedback.
So, I think it's, it's, there's nothing sacred, and I think it's an important question to ask. I think that when we're looking at the things that were put on these different options, the fact that risers with no backing, getting rid of field trips and a variety of things made the list, but keeping these teachers is not theirs, is significant and important for us to note in your own sense of whether or not they're needed. So, I would support keeping them.
Brandy?
I also support keeping them.
But Andy, I will say that is valuable. I mean, even in, in the minority position, it's good to vet all sides of an idea. So, this is a very productive conversation. And just really vetting what that, what those roles do and why they're, why they're valued.
Right. And, and again, the, to me, you know, I'm looking, trying to be pragmatic about the realities in front of us and where we can optimize. And what, going into this discussion without your modified population, I had a different approach. But the modified enrollments that you provided to us, and then the projections that those build from, tell me that while it might be popular in some circles to not add these, I think we will learn to regret the decision if we get the continued burst that we're seeing. So, I, having, having been on the board when you've come to us, well, you and, and Marge have come to us, mid-year saying we need another teacher mid-year because of enrollments. We need to be mindful and planning for the potentiality of having this. If we go to a year from now and we find that everybody's moved out of Merrimack, then let's cut things. But that's not the case. The numbers and the data don't tell us that right now. So, thanks.
Brandy?
I, I think the other element to this is that if you have the ability to go into the building and actually sub or help out in some capacity within our elementary schools, it makes, once you have that visibility into the classroom itself, it's much easier to see why it's needed. And I've been in that position, and I can absolutely say it's needed. So, it wouldn't even be a question to remove that for me simply because I've had the ability to walk in and have conversations with teachers and understand exactly sort of what's going on within the building and how the, the student-teacher ratio certainly impacts the education of all of the students that are there, but also the behaviors of those students during learning times. So, it's, for me, that would just not be even an option. There are many other ways that I feel that we can cut. But I think that that's something that is needed, especially with the boom. But even as we are now, I would say that it's, it's definitively needed.
Are there any other thoughts on the options presented? Andy? And we still have more questions from, yep?
I would ask that the superintendent share the results of my question from last week.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so the question that Board Member Schneider asked is, are we seeing any downward trends in student course selections? So, I'm, at the high school, sorry, at the high school. So, historically, under-enrolled classes, historically over time, under-enrolled classes consistently are Mandarin and Arabic. There is not a downward trend there. They are historically low. Talk about what I, how I want to talk to you about downward trends in a minute. But those are historically low. Just want to give, for the purposes of the community, just a little bit history. Mandarin was advocated for by a group of parents several years ago who testified to a growing need for students interested in business and related fields to be exposed to, if not fluent in, one of the world's most spoken languages. The trustees of the trust funds provided the seed money to get that program up and running to see if it served a need. Its enrollment has been low in contrast to other classes, but it has distinguished Merrimack High School among New Hampshire high schools and has been invaluable to those who chose to take it. So, that has never been a over-enrolled course, ever. But it has been impactful for the students who've chosen to take it, which kind of gets to another point I'll make in a minute, which is that one thing that Merrimack High School has tried to do is always try to provide students with their preferences. And we have a 96% success rate in placing students in their courses of preference. For those of you who might not do scheduling, that's unheard of. But sometimes what that means is that we take the computer algorithms, and if they can't give a student its preference, we take the algorithms and we put them here. And then Pete Bergeron, Rich Dampieri, or Sharon Putney and the guidance staff hand-schedule students, deviating from the algorithm of the computer in order to achieve that 96% success rate. Arabic, so if, but that would be a cut because that would be an entire position because the only classes that teacher teaches is Mandarin. Arabic, it's, it's a similar thing, not in its inception. We happen to be very fortunate to have a person who is a native speaker, who is a teacher of Arabic and French. Those courses for Arabic are historically the lowest in Merrimack High School. They, the numbers haven't gone down. They have stayed quite low over the course of years. That wouldn't be, if we cut Arabic, that would not be a cut position because what we would do is just transfer that person to the French classes that he also teaches, and that would, you know, reduce the number of students in French sections. But that wouldn't be an outright cut. Just want to remind the board that, as discussed the other night, many classes are capped by the state for minimum standards, not by us, by the state, and we cannot exceed, for example, we can't exceed 24 in science labs. We cannot exceed 16 in tech ed or family consumer science. And Merrimack, as I mentioned, has a 96% success rate with student preferences. What I want to sort of say is that, to talk about downward trends would belie a fact at the high school, which is that every year, you have a group of freshmen who move up to sophomores, and then a new class of freshmen coming in. They have very, very different interests, very different needs, plus they've got, but they've got core subjects too. But every year, there's a character of students. So, some students, characteristically, in a cohort, love photography. And so, that will be over-enrolled in one year. They move on, another class comes up, and for whatever reason, characteristically, they don't love photography. So, that will be under-enrolled. And when a course is under-enrolled, in many cases, they aren't, they don't run. In which case, students are told, you know, we try, that's why we don't have a 100% success rate, but a 96% success rate, because in cases where you've got four or five, last year, you were telling people, turning them away. And this year, nobody wants photography, they want something else. And so, it's not, it's, it's not like we see, for instance, fewer kids taking French over the years, to the point where we don't need as many French sections, but more in Spanish. It, that's not the case. It is true that there are some years where you just have nobody interested in something that last year was super popular. A good example is the Art of Science, which is an interdisciplinary course between the art department, obviously, and the science department. And it's brilliant. And, and for some reason, it really inspired kids, and they took it like gangbusters. And the next year, it was under-enrolled completely. Even with great word of mouth and guidance, talking about it and talking about all its benefits, it just didn't attract the interest of that different group of kids. So, the better way to look at what we do is we offer courses oftentimes on a rotating basis. So, we'll, if photography didn't fly in a given year, we won't run it. But then the next year, it'll be back in the program of studies to give students a choice. And then oftentimes, we see it cycling up, and then students get that. What, what has distinguished Merrimack High School, and I've worked in, I was a high school department head and English teacher for a long time. And what has distinguished Merrimack High School is its efforts to provide students with what they need and are interested in. You can't divorce that conversation from the conversation, as Jared Barnes mentioned, from graduation rates. Give you an example, there are students in the high school right now, and I think it's fair to say, without getting into details, that the only reason that they come to school is because they've got Mr. Carl in woodworking. That would be, for some, the only reason they come. Do we need to offer woodworking? Is it a requirement? No. And if we chose for that reason to give that up, we've got a problem with graduation rates. So, that's not the only example. We don't need to provide music either. And those numbers, in some cases, are quite low. But the only thing that keeps some students coming to school is the fact that they can be in music, learn that skill, and so on and so forth. So, my answer, our, our answer to your question is that there is no specific example of a historical trend downward for any class. But I don't want to give you the impression that every class is up here. Some just don't fly for a given point in time, and then it gets popular again. It's also just important to share that, and again, everything is up for grabs, and we will make anything work. But when we talk about the possibility of any kinds of, let's say, reductions in staff at the high school, let's say, not that it's been broached, but it might be, and understandably so. But if we talk about that, it's important to talk about the other functions that a teacher has in a building beyond teaching a class. For instance, if the student numbers stay the same, so let's say 1,200 students, you're going to need to provide accommodations for students in study halls. So, every person at the, and that's not the reason, the only reason that you keep a teacher. But when this board asks about impacts, it's important for you to know all of the things that a single teacher impacts. So, there cannot be more than 30 students in a study hall. And so, every teacher that's reduced changes the dynamic of the, the, the study halls that are, have to be provided to students in the eighth block of their day. You have AM and PM bus that needs a minimum of four people on a rotating basis every two or three weeks. You have cafeteria duties that are required. And so, when you take all of those and cafeteria for lunches, so there need to be 16 people a day who are available for cafeteria duty. So, when we think of a teacher, we're not thinking just about the role that a teacher has in a classroom, but other things that they do in a building. They also provide students, not just their own students either, but with support at the beginning and the end of the day. So, if you think about office hours in college. So, high school teachers have more or less office hours where they're available to their students. And so, there's an impact there. Home room advisory. Just yesterday, when we had, or Monday, when we had an unexpected, was Monday yesterday?
It was.
It was yesterday, okay. When we had, when we had an unexpected situation with a, a gas leak, it was a wonderful example of team play, not just in the high school, but between the high school and Master Cola Elementary School and Merrimack Middle School. Every single hand was on deck. You still have 1,200 students. Their safety is a factor. We have to make sure that they're somewhere. And in the case where students drive, they needed to be, you know, told what to do and when to come back. But there needed to be all hands on deck to be deployed at all the various locations. And so, so again, I'm not suggesting this in anything we've talked about tonight, trying to give the impression you can't go there, you can't go there. This board has merely impressed upon me over the years the importance of telling it like it is when we're proposing this or that, so that you know what you're kind of dealing with. And so, I wouldn't want the board or anybody to think that the potential of a cut, which is perfectly reasonable, but just exists as a cut that infects class size or student-teacher ratios. Because there are critical functions that each teacher does for the maintenance of a building. And so, when a student population remains the same and the teacher population declines, it's not that we can't handle it, we've done it before, but those are impacts. So, they just need to be accounted for when that conversation gets raised, whenever it gets raised.
So, Andy, I think, has Mark answered all the questions that you asked him to cover for tonight? Or do you have any follow-ons based on what he's presented as well?
So, one thing I just want to be clear on, so first, let me go on the record to say, I am not proposing by any stretch to cut positions for the sake of a budget bogey figure. It's just not the way I'm cut. It's not the way I approach things. I try to look at data, and originally, when we looked at the original forecasted population numbers, it looked to me like there might have been some economies to say, was the high school staffing appropriate, given the volume of kids coming in? It's unclear to me, based on these new numbers that you show, that have jumped up significantly in some cases, that it's necessarily a prudent discussion to have. Just get, and, and in high school, you can't peanut butter. It's not as simple as like with middle school or below, where you look at grades and you say, there's a general teacher population, because there's definitely, there's definitely subjects and areas like that that are specific, many of which, which are core, you know, the core things. Largely, when you look at decreases in population, you look at core classes such as math or English, and are the ratios appropriate within those, given the population? within those, given the population, and is there an opportunity to reduce? We have the board, when we're, when the student population was dropping, we had cuts of a math teacher, an English teacher, because the population didn't support it. I guess what I was looking for is whether there was any indication that that was the, if there was an opportunity for that in the high school, given the way the population currently is and the way that it's looking. You haven't talked about staffing at the high school for a couple of years. I just wanted to revisit it largely. I also want to get this board to take a position, because you said something in your discussion about Mandarin, having a teacher to teach in the single class. I don't want somebody to latch on to that, saying, oh, there's a body that we can whack if we get rid of the X number of kids that are taking it. I want this board to take a solid position right now, that they're in support of continuing that, to make sure that that's not viewed by anybody as a target. Because when you said it, you implied something I don't think you intended to imply. And maybe I just read it the wrong way.
Right. And, and I can just clarify, one of the words you used, to teach a single class, teach a single subject.
Thank you.
So, so that, there's Mandarin one, two, three, and four.
Correct. I mean.
And so it's a three-quarter position, not a full-time position at this point, because there are, there are more sections.
I know. That's why I wanted to expound, because the way you said it, it was, if you didn't know the full context, you'd make an assumption, and that wasn't the case, right? So.
Yes. And, and in full candor, I know that well enough, because my son is in Mandarin.
Right.
So, in context.
So, the question I have for you is, are you seeing any opportunities because of volume to, to do any of that possible reduction of anything like that? And I'm sure you know off the top of your head that information. And the second, I'd just like this board to reaffirm its position on world languages, given that, what you shared.
So I want to preface my answer by saying again, because I don't want to be misleading on this point. I work for the board, and whatever the board felt it needed to do, I will, we will do. So I don't, I, I really, I hope I'm not giving the impression like, non-negotiable, non-negotiable. I mean, nothing could be further from the truth.
The board, I'm going to be clear. The board has given you direction over the years on the way we want the subjects approached, especially those volume ones here. There's not a change in direction from the board in what we want you to do. It's rather reflecting whether there's any change in the ratios of what you've seen that would cause us to look at things that way.
Yep.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, we've been giving you misdirection for the last fifteen years. We really want you to do something. That's not my intent.
No, I totally get that. So, so my answer is no. I, 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 we did not add or suggest a, a reduction at the middle, at the high school, because right now, we, we feel strongly that we're appropriately staffed. I say right now. Next year, during the budget season, I may have a different story for you. But right now, I'm confident that we are appropriately
So if you would like the board to have a statement, would you prefer it to be a motion, or would you prefer it just to be a, a will of the board with statements?
I want a will of the board thing. I want individually just state our position on this, so that it's clear that we're, we're speaking as a board.
Excellent. I just wanted to guide your, your thoughts on it. So on that note, I'll, I'll start, because again, I am the one person at this board that has a child in the Mandarin program, who is a senior. So we're talking about a budget that won't even affect my child. But what I wouldn't do is say, now that my child got what he wanted out of the program, I don't feel it's necessary for funding. Nothing's further from the truth. I think Mandarin, Arabic, Latin, Spanish, and French are all very valuable assets to our, our, our course, our, our course catalog. I think it makes us unique that we have Arabic. I think we're the only school in the state to offer it. And to the point where I think we even need to give alt certification, because there's not one, because no one else has it. So, so to that end, Arabic has also paid dividends to our students. We have a student that got a job in the UN, got to the college they wanted to go to, because when it comes down to a child that had Arabic in high school and a child that had maybe a more traditional language, they're going to go with someone that may have a competitive edge and a more worldly exposure. And I think that we offer that in this school. And that's very, something to be very proud of. Mandarin, the same. I think that a lot of schools tried it and then did not keep with it, because Mandarin's a commitment, and we have committed, and we have, it has thrived. It was a half position when we started it, and it's up to three-quarters. And I think with the world language curriculum, not using the right word, study, curriculum updates and studies, that I think that there's going to be more potential for Mandarin in grades five to twelve. So, so with that, I am a hundred percent supportive of all five foreign languages that we have at the high school. And that's my position.
Shannon, I couldn't agree with you more. I think it's a differentiator in this district that isn't seen throughout the state. The only directive I have is that I think we need to spend more time at the middle school level, letting our kids know that these options exist. I think they can be differentiators for college admission. And I think that it's an amazing experience that's afforded to the children in this district, should they choose to take it. But I think, you know, it brings up the other point about, you know, just the high school in and of itself is just a different animal compared to our other buildings and other areas of education, in the sense that that's really a point in time where we have a responsibility to help children develop their pathways. If we were training everyone to be an engineer, it would be a much more simplistic formula to be able to put staffing together, as well as other things, like you might see, you know, in the lower grades. But we're not. We have a responsibility and a requirement for children to be able to take these pathways into different, you know, college and career readiness, life readiness. And people have jobs, they're not all engineers. They're not all going to be a school teacher. But it's important that children have the opportunity to maximize the pathways that might be afforded to them. But I just wanted to address that part as well. But I am extremely supportive of our, our language program. And it's something that gives me great pride.
Naomi?
Not repeating the, the words already said. I think that our modern language lineup is spectacular and should remain.
And Brandy?
I agree with all the comments already stated.
Thank you. We're the ones with high schoolers right now. So we get, we're in the weeds. So, Andy?
So I figured I'd do my position.
Well, I figured if you asked for it, so I'd let you go last.
Well, yeah, okay. So I'm sort of in an interesting position, is that I went to school here, sent all my kids to school here, and I'm heading into retire pretty soon. Well, my wife sooner than me, but we're getting into that. So we've got no skin in the game. We've got no grandkids. We've got no skin in the game to the Merrimack school system. But I also know that one of the reasons that people choose to come here is because of the diversity of what we offer. I mean, one could argue where the, where the test scores and all this other kind of stuff. But the bottom line is the diversity of what we offer is attractive to people that want to move here. People want to sell their houses. People want to buy houses, things like that. So I'm not maybe as passionate as some of the others on the board about the world language program. But having done world language when I was in college a whole long time ago, I know that the options that the high school provides give you a lot more opportunities when you get to college. I think that that's not well-understood by people when they look at this. So I, and given, especially with, with Arabic, that cutting the Arabic program would not save us any headcount. But it provides us the diversity by having that resource in place to be able to do this is, is a benefit. So I'm also in support because of all that, so.
Thank you. So we've gone over a lot tonight. We haven't made any changes except for the actual enrollment and changing the, the top line. So at this point, I think what is, would be interesting to understand, so that we can kind of prepare to finalize, we're in the home stretch here. Where do we see this budget, where it stands today and where we feel it needs to be before it goes to the budget committee? Because that starts in, for all intents and purposes, next Thursday, that they would, if we stay on schedule, that they will get the budget. So we haven't done any adjustments. We've gone over potential adjustments. We haven't talked about beyond what default would look like. And just, I really want to know the will of the board for our next session. You know, what are we looking to work on, so that we can prepare our administrators to, to kind of work towards those numbers? So is there, Andy, are you half there or up there? Okay, go ahead.
Well, so first of all, in, in looking at the budget this year, and, and obviously finding what we did around the, the reduction and what we're able to do with healthcare, there are some opportunities that we have that we can't necessarily address this budget year, but some things that I think we as a district can look at over the coming year in terms of the way that we do things like healthcare. For, one of the things that came to mind, healthcare was, was sticking out at me this year for some reason. The collective bargaining agreement with the Merrimack Teachers Association allows us to add healthcare plans every year. Now, we've passed that threshold. It had, per the contract, we can't introduce any new plans to their options after January first, and we have to consult with them before. So we're past that. But I think we as a board need to be proactive going into next budget year to look at healthcare options that we can add to it, that would allow a broader choice for teachers, that could reduce the overall cost to the district. One of the things that's interesting about Merrimack's staffing is that it's, it's especially compared to, I mean, compared to Bedford. It's a more mature in terms of years of service staff, because we've had a high school a whole lot longer. We've had a formal middle school a whole lot longer. So as a result, healthcare costs, as well as salary and staffing like that, is, is inherently higher. But as new staff comes in, you know, we talked a little bit about the, the, the really high deductible plan that we offered, that, that a few people have taken. I think that we have to look at other options that might be more attractive, but maybe doesn't save the district as much money, but is an opportunity for us to save, so that our figures going into open enrollment for the, the following year, we can get that healthcare number down even more overall in terms of a burden for the district. So there's an opportunity there, based on what the contract has given us so far. We know next year, there's negotiation for a new agreement, and having some of that data around other services and, and plans will be helpful in the negotiations as well as that. I think it's next year we negotiate, next fall, I think.
Support staff is next fall.
Support, so Merrimack Teachers is the year after that?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, the data is good to help us in, prepare for negotiation, but also to look for next year's budget, so.
I believe Support Staff also has that language in it.
It's, it's similar. It's similar, but yeah, right, exactly. But there's opportunities there. And I think we as a board, one of the ways we can control our long-term costs is to do that, because as we know, it's one of the more volatile sides. But other than that, when I look at what we've got in terms of overall benefits and staffing and things like that, I'm not seeing for this year, a big turn of the knob. However, I also see in the various options that you've thrown at us, I was, and you see me abdicating back here. I, in my own mind, had created a number that allows us to get within spitting distance of getting below eighty million dollars, that I'd like to propose, when the time is right. It, it cuts over about six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars off of the proposed budget, beyond the four-hundred-and-fifty that we already got rid of, that in my mind, does not impact student services and allows the opportunity to take some of the items that we've done and move them into warrant articles to allow voters to choose if they want to do some of these incremental things. There's some things that are listed here and other things that I pulled out of the budget. So when we are, and I don't think I need additional data from administration, but rather, these are things that I think administration can easily answer and that we can talk about. So for me, I have an idea of what I'd like to propose. It gets us right at, if not slightly below, the eighty million dollar level, puts us meaningfully below default. And I'd like to make, have an opportunity to discuss that, whether it's tonight or at our meeting on Thursday, or whatever's appropriate, so.
Well, if you have the thoughts, I think we're still in workshop mode. And, you know, if, if you feel, I would be fine with that.
Okay. So I'm going to read these off to you right now. So if I were to take our current operating budget, which as stated is eighty million, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, the first thing I would do is remove the windows, the two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, which was, been proposed, I think, across the board. I also think this is an opportunity for us to put that into a warrant article, to let the voters choose. That is an opportunity that we as a board can discuss. I believe that we need to remove the, the hundred thousand dollar campus plan and the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar Brentwood tear down from this particular budget, largely because I think that socialization and work for the whole area makes sense to do at the same time. And I think using the charrette method to be able to start, and then be able to come up and then potentially plan for this for next year is an appropriate stepping stone. So that's, so that brings it to, those three items alone take four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars away. The next thing that I, that I would look to cut is, I know that the drainage of the middle school is an issue that was raised. It's, the first time we really heard it was this year. I know that there was some uncertainty about the, whether it would work or not. I know we just, we talked about that earlier. I would like to see if we could delay that for a year. I mean, I know we haven't been able to use the field, so all it would do is increase our usage. But I'd like to see that seventy-five thousand dollar removed. I, I would then remove the charter school bus, that we've talked about, and one of the options, I think that given it hasn't been used, I know it's a risk and exposure, but given there's only one charter school in Merrimack today, the, the risk is fairly limited. So that's a forty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollar reduction. And then the two ones that are not necessarily on your list, the first one is transportation for vocational. That, we talked about that in the high school budget. I believe it's, it's forecasted at a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. I had questions as to the height, or as to the volume level. The expanded level that we've seen historically has been in the hundred-and-forty to hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollar range. So my proposal is, is that we cut twenty-five thousand dollars from that line item, which is one-hundred-dash-two-seven-two-three-dash-one-seven-dash-eight-five-one-zero-dash-three-zero, to bring that down to about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which still gives a little bit of growth room, but still, but allows a meaningful cut. And then my final cut is, proposed cut, and again, these are all proposed for the enjoyment of the board, is the total furniture. So in, in all, several of your options, you have furniture replacement that you've cut out. That total is fifty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. My proposal is, knowing that, that there's two classrooms that we've got to populate based on that, my proposal is, is that we cut twenty-five thousand dollars from that number, to bring that, and, and then decide as a, as a district, how you want to take that furniture number and spread it across the different schools. Which, so that fifty-three thousand turns into a twenty-eight thousand dollar, whatever number for overall furniture. Those items removed would remove six-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars from the proposed operating budget, which would bring, and this is, I tried really hard to do more, but nothing, the numbers weren't working. It would bring the operating budget down, based on these cuts, to eighty million, eleven thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. And if anybody knows how to get twelve thousand dollars to bring it down to seventy-nine million and nine-hundred and something, that'd be cool. But my goal was to get it down to eighty million or just below. And that's how I achieved it, based on what it is. And none of these affect the, the student, things like field trips. It doesn't include the, anything of meaning from your last option, option four, around the transitional academic support, because there's no way I would ever propose we touch that piece. But it tries to do some of the meaningful things that we can, we can reduce and be able to bring the budget down well below what we started with in this process, so.
I mean, the items that I documented were very similar. I just have a question mark around the middle school fields, that I just want to see that data that I had requested before I make my determination. The other thing I thought as it relates, I had also removed the Brentwood, that master plan amount, and then the windows, like we discussed earlier. The only thing I thought is that if we do remove that master plan, we may want to consider adding a few more, some money there to at least get some concept that we can prepare for the public. And I don't know what that dollar is, but those, those are, as well as the forty-one thousand, that's just a no-brainer. If, if we're comfortable collectively to reduce that vocational transportation, then I'm fine. If we, we feel that that's a comfortable change to make, then that's cool. But you pretty much, I would say your thoughts are aligning with mine.
Yep. And, and Andy, I just had a quick thought on that furniture. Could you give me that number again? That furniture, I know we still have those two classrooms built into it.
So if, the two classrooms built in, if you take that bigger number, it's fifty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars.
So we're looking at forty-three thousand, because we need the ten thousand for the two classrooms?
Well, I mean, but my, my idea was, so if we cut twenty-five from that, that leaves twenty-eight thousand of which. Well, I mean, but my, my idea was, so if we cut twenty-five from that, that leaves twenty-eight thousand of which ten thousand would go to the classroom and the other would be spread across the other schools.
My personal opinion is if, if the goal is to be under eighty million, then that's where I would take further, because again, it's not gonna get you much.
I, I know, it's.
But that's, you know, I want those two classrooms whole. I mean.
No, 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 I mean, that's why I didn't bring, bring it down to zero.
No, totally fine.
But I, I know that we have to do the classrooms, and I'd like to have some money for some of those meaningful replacements that need to be done. And I also, originally in my listing, got below the eighty million mark, the risers, but I was convinced after discussion.
I don't like what I heard on that either.
Yeah, no, so I, I didn't propose that, so, anyway. But I, I would be willing to entertain if we wanted, people are comfortable with a little bit more in furniture to get it down, but.
And eight hundred bucks on, on book bindings, don't forget that.
Nancy Rose would come after us if she thought that was wrong, but anyway.
Well, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Do you want us to look through the remainder of the budget to get you below the eighty million threshold? I know we haven't had a, a, an in-depth conversation with Nancy, but she had mentioned at one point in time that she could limit some of the wiring, the cabling that she's doing already at the schools. Maybe that would do it for you.
I mean, I mean, so, so for me, I mean, it may sound like nickel and diming to get us down to this number. For me, I know that there's other things that we can look at meaningfully over the next year to help reduce the bogey more significantly around things like benefits and healthcare and things like that. And that's something that I'm gonna want to do myself and work with, you know, HR and, and maybe health, health trust, cost containment committee, you know, maybe talk through those. But for me, I think that if we can get to a budget number that we are proposing that starts with seventy-nine million and has some number behind it, it would make me feel better. It's still an increase from the, the approved last year, but it's certainly not the eighty-one million dollars that we started with. And I think, given what we're able to do, it's at least a step in the right direction for this year. So, that's, that's my drive, so.
Cindy.
I would just say I have a quick request from Matt. As conversation continues, if we could get, if you could do some quick calculation of, let's say, what, what the percent increase be from last year's budget to eighty million, just as a, a frame of reference.
It's not that. Last year's budget was seventy-nine oh thirty-four, four seventy-seven, so it's not that much.
It's like one point two.
So, one point two percent.
Like one point two increase.
Is that under the, even the cost of living? Index?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Naomi and Brandy.
So, my thoughts were very, very similar. I was looking at the same items, other than, Cindy was close to yours. I was thinking that the drainage would be important to have that bit of additional information on before deciding, and I'm a little, a little less thrilled at cutting furniture. But that may be part of a remnant of having needed to have furniture in my own classrooms way back when and, and that just leaking in. But I would add the following, that is, given this particular goal, I'd also be very interested in knowing how administration might come back to meet that, that might or might not meet what we're seeing at these tables. If you had other ideas that aren't on this list are certainly welcome, and now we're within the process.
Of course, Mark.
Can I just, I want to be clear, I understood. So, when you say other ideas, you mean to achieve Andy's goal and things not necessarily on the four options?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I understand you.
And, and I'm not necessarily saying that that's my goal either. I think it is a goal. I'd, I'd love to see that happen, but I'm not saying that's a, a hard line that I'm drawing at this point in time.
Sure.
But given that it's something that's in play, I'd be curious to see how that changes your thinking if.
Okay, no, no, that's helpful. Thank you.
Brandy.
So, I was similar. I had the one hundred thousand master plan. I'd like to move that to a warrant article. I do think that, that, or remove it from our operating budget for this year. The windows I also took out. I did take out the risers. I removed the furniture with the exception of Thorntons, and I am, I stand on a different side relative to the Brentwood building. I really could go either way, bless you. However, I struggle because I'd really like to see it get taken down. I think that that space could be utilized more effectively, and I, the, the biggest challenge is more the, the dollar amount. So, initially, when Brentwood came up, I was on the budget committee, and it was discussed. And at that time, actually, Naomi was the one who sold me on the fact that we would be really purchasing the land for the sake of having the land as opposed to utilizing the building. I realized that we're trying to meet a number and and try and modify our budget and cut out costs, but for me, I'd really like to see the demo of that building. So, I, if there's other ways that we can cut the budget but include that, I might be the only person on the board that would like to see Brentwood demoed, but I, if there's other ways that we can achieve our goal without that being taken off, that would be great.
Andy.
So, when we've talked about this in the planning and building committee, they were, they're lined up with their bulldozers and stuff to go and push the building down. And so, I actually went into this whole planning thing, assuming that we would bulldoze it, tear it down, put it there, use it for whatever temporary purpose while we did the planning. That was my thought going into all this. The cost came into effect, but the other piece of this is, is that we always assumed that because we couldn't occupy Brentwood as a meeting space, it had no use. Right? But what we found is that it's providing a valuable tool for training for police and other emergency things. It's a building that there's no, they don't have to prepare, they don't have to do anything to. And I think that one of the things that we could do is by keeping it around for another year, while we sit and decide what the plan is for that space, we could potentially market this to other entities that might want to use a building for training and potentially even rent it out, make some income on it. Find a way. I mean, if, we know that there's a lot of cubbies and classrooms and corners and things like that that could be done for, for training for other entities in the state. And if they did it during off times without students within the campus, there's an opportunity there, and I think we need to look at it. So, I think by rushing to take it down before we look at that might necessarily be the best approach, so. Yes.
So, I just want to clarify with Matt. My understanding is that if we did that, then it would require a whole review, if I'm understanding you right, of, from fire and others, we'd have to, right, if we were to use it for anything other than the police use, would we not have to?
Oh, yeah. We, we'd have to update the fire alarm panel.
But no, 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 I wasn't going down that road.
I, I know. You were just talking about for training, for police.
Training, police.
Just for police.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 no.
I misunderstood you.
Other entities in the state that need to do active shooter training or something like that. It's a perfect kind of a building. It's a school building.
It's fine.
It's the place, that's what I mean. I don't want to spend a nickel other than keeping the heat on in there.
Got it.
But there's an opportunity. We could bring some revenue in and, and the state police or another school district that, or, or another town that needs a building. There's an opportunity for us.
Thank you, I understand now.
No, no, I, oh, trust me.
And actually, just the question I had too, because I was thinking about, because, you know, with the police train, can they do fire with simulated smoke? Where it's not actually fire-based smoke, you know, like, kind of like smoke cams, those kind of things, where they could be trained in there as well?
I am not sure if they like, like flashbang grenades.
I don't think it's a flashbang grenade, but they have like a, like a smoke.
Yeah, you, you roll it into the spot and it goes boom, and the smoke goes all over the place.
But if it has a fire associated, I don't want that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they could do that.
That's fine.
But.
Like, they have smoke machines at like concerts. Can you use stuff like that and put in a window and just?
Put a smoke machine in there? Yeah, I can do that. We can do that.
Force, force things in that, create the limited visibility and navigation, those kind of things. That's all.
We would work, if the police had a request, we would work with them and we would work with the fire department to make sure it was okay.
I'm just saying, is that something that could offer to the, yeah, because.
We work together all the time, so it's fine.
So, anyway, circle around. That's the reason why I want to see it kick around for another year, simply because it allows us time to plan, and I think there might be use for it. We just haven't considered it.
Brandy and then Naomi.
The question that I would have then is, what is the frequency of that use? So, how often have we utilized it thus far? And asking the town, the frequency in which they might utilize it in the future, does it make sense if they're only gonna utilize it once, when we can tear it down and possibly utilize that space for other needs? And if we do move the hundred thousand off and move it to a warrant article and it gets turned down, then we're not looking at the planning anyway for at least another year.
I was gonna say, I've got Naomi, Cindy, then Andy. If I respond, I'll, I'll let you know to that.
I mean, I don't know how many times it'd be used. We haven't, we haven't opened it up proposal to, other than the Merrimack Police Department. I mean, it's an opportunity that we could potentially have in front of us. I personally am not a fan in, of putting the planning onto its own warrant article simply because it's disconnected from the bigger picture, because there's still, in my mind, not enough context on what that planning really is yet to be able to, to sell it to the voters. Right now, it just says planning for the campus. So, what does that mean? You know, we, I don't think we have a big enough understanding of exactly what that would mean, you know. We could take what planning and building did, but that's one of potential objects. So, I think we as a board have to take action over the coming year to really start formalizing the steps to do the charrette, to do the idea, work with planning and building. And then, you know, maybe if we can do a small inexpensive one, add five thousand or some number into the budget to do an initial kind of thing before you do the in-depth, that'd be okay. But to me, the tearing down of the Brentwood and the, the operational thing are tethered together. I hate to use the word tether, but in, in my mind that they are. So, that's why I'm trying to avoid both of them this year, simply because Brentwood has some use now that I didn't realize before. And the, and the planning thing, I think, needs to be the oper, the, the, the analysis of the campus needs to be a little more thought out before we ask for money. That's all.
Cindy.
I mean, I just simply don't want to take it down because we don't have a plan yet. And so, I just think it's prudent until we fully can move forward, I just don't see the need to take it down. Once you take it down, you can't get it back should you need it for other things, and given that I think the utilities are a lower item on our budget, I would rather sit tight and see what the next year brings as it relates to planning. But I just, I just am not ready to take it down. And the fact that it is getting usage by our community, by our police department, makes me feel a lot better about leaving it on as well.
Okay, Naomi, I'm sorry, skipped over you.
So, I'm intrigued by the, reaching the, the eighty line and going below it, and that's one of the reasons why I was interested in talking about that one twenty-five. But there's one other piece that I think is important to reinsert here in favor of leaving that in. Last year was a complex process with pieces to it, and the, the budget committee had a very strong opinion that they put forward and wanted to express. And one of the things that I was told as part of that was if, if we don't do something, this building will never come down. And time will continue to pass and nothing will happen. I think that we need to consider that within our choice as far as it's a year later and the building's still there. At some point, a decision has to be made in regard to it and movement made. I'm not saying that that movement should be it coming down. I'm not saying it shouldn't, but I'm not thrilled at the idea of simply taking all of the expenses and the planning and putting all of it off another year and having no representation in the budget of that, that process.
Okay, Andy.
So, what I'm saying, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, you can't kick this can forever. But I, I'm saying what, what we need to do as a board is start the conceptual planning without the dollars this year. We have to, as a board, to commit to do that and not just ignore it, because I think this year we've, in large part, had the budget, or the planning and building do some work on it, just thoughts on it. But we as a board have not considered it at all, really. We, we haven't discussed it. So, I think we as a board need to officially take this on as, as a meaningful thing that we're gonna do, understand exactly what it is we're asking for, for the planning in terms of real dollars like that, and and again, I, if, if Brentwood was not being used at all, I don't want to board it up. It's either keep it for the minimal use it's doing now or tear it down, one of the two. And I'm willing to let it go for a year and let people utilize it, spend the twenty-three thousand to to, to heat it and, and keep things alive, investigate whether we can get some revenue out of it with some of these other, you know, police entities that might want to use it as a building to be able to do some training. I think there's an opportunity there. But that's my thought, so.
Cindy.
Well, I mean, at some point, we do need a new SAU building. I mean, there's just no question. It's, it's not doable, but for very much longer. You know, one option is, you know, how we're gonna finance that. Are we gonna, you know, would that be something we would put on as a warrant? Simply for the cost right there, would we bond it? And if we bonded it, could we build the destruction of this in with the bond? I just feel like I have some questions like that that might provide some benefit for the taxpayers when we look at a bigger picture over, I mean, it's not gonna be a huge bond, but I've seen districts put a million-dollar bond in their as an option for their voters. So, that's just another idea that I was kind of thinking about. I'm not saying I'm supportive or not supportive about it, but it's just, it might, rather than it just being a hit that hits all taxpayers right at once, right in one year, maybe there's something else we can do with it once we know the big picture, and we don't know that big picture yet, so.
Yeah, absolutely, Mark.
So, for what it's worth, I would, I would just offer this. If it's not the will of the board to have the master plan, and I completely, we put it on the list too, then my perspective is I, I would not personally think it would be a great idea to do anything with Brentwood now, because part of the thing that I'm hoping, whether it's a smaller dollar plan or a hundred thousand dollar plan, or whenever we get to that point, it feels like the thing that we've maybe lacked is, again, a sense of a master plan. So, to take something down out of the context of knowing, you know, the, the whole full usage seems to be the kind of thing that I personally am trying to advocate against, which is piecemealing. So, I mean, you know, it's not for me to say I'm fine, whatever, we'll do what the board wants, but if you're wondering, it, it would seem like we'd just hold off. And, and when we're ready for a master plan, again, of whatever dollar amount, and we'll get more information about what that might look like, then it seems to me that then that becomes part of the calculus of what we do. I don't think there's any plan really that's gonna come forth that says that's a viable option. However, there are things around that building, in that building, under that building, that need to be explored. And if we do one thing and then don't have a larger context, we're gonna find ourselves back in this piecemealing thing. And for me, the, the, the good idea, whenever it happens, is that we present the community. I think, feels to me like the thing we need to present the community most is cohesive, planful understanding of what all the implications of that hall, that property is, including a building that we probably know isn't gonna be a long-term thing. That, for what it's worth, that's what I would offer.
I would tend to take your lead on that as well. Again, what we want to do, you've, we, we come twice a month. We come a lot more than twice a week lately. But, you know, just budget season, but you're every day. So, it's, you know, I really think that when you're talking about, you know, you're, you're in the weeds of it, you know, three hundred sixty-five days a year, even on your days off, if there's a problem, you're, you're, you're in it all the time. We're in it regularly in our roles. The budget committee's in it seasonally. And really, at that level, I think that, you know, the less time you spend with the, this vision planning, the, the less, you know, I, I think we understand the consequences. And we understand, you know, we're not doing the visioning you're doing, because again, you know, campus management, student outcomes, you have a lot of different moving parts in your roles. We have, you know, moving parts in ours, but they're not nearly as deep as yours. You know, we don't touch the, the lives of every student every day, and the decisions we make will, uh, don't do that as much as they do with you. So, you know, I, I'm taking your lead because I think what you, what you have is kind of a, a long-term vision. And obviously, coming into this role, you know, you've seen what this, this campus has been for many years. You know, I think there are resources that we need to engage to do the right thing. I do think if we're gonna take it out so we can get to the number, and I don't think that's necessarily the wrong way to go with, with the study, I think that that's the will of the board, but I do think we should have it as a warrant article. Because at the end of the day, I think the town center committee is dependent on this outcome. I think, you know, the school district operations depend on this outcome, the students every day are dependent on this outcome, the community at large with Parks and Rec, I just gave you, what, three? With Parks and Rec, I just gave you, what, three meetings ago, to say, Parks and Rec is at pretty much capacity with their events, because between parking and facilities, they don't have the same space we do, and they're getting overcrowded for, for their programs. They just can't safely do what they could do with, with traffic and everything else. And they're looking to, at other options, and the district is one they were asking to consider. And a discussion point, not that they've done a formal proposal yet. So again, we're the hub of the town, so they talk about student outcomes, we have to talk about community outcomes as well. And I think, you know, we are not the town government, we are the school government, but we have huge implications on, on town value, and what they can do with, with our facilities. So, you know, we, we really need to look at this mindfully. And so I'm okay with, with, with putting it off, but I'm, you know, I took this campus plan, whether it be 100,000, whether it be 50,000, there needs to be a, a mindful, engineered, strategic outcome of this. Because, again, all factions that are interested in this outcome are, are identifying the flaws. Well, at some point, we have to identify the solution. So, that, that's where I'm at with this thing. And, you know, so, so I, I'm definitely not about taking down Brentwood, and I'm definitely concerned about not having a campus plan budgeted, but if, I do think we need to ask, because at the end of the day, the community uses our facilities every single day. And when the big deals come, the July 4th and everything else, without us, they're, they're kind of up, up the creek. We, they need us, and we, we are appreciative to be able to offer those facilities and be collaborative, that's what we want. So, so that's kind of where we're at. That's how I'm at, I hope, you know, yeah, I hope there's agreement. So on that note, we've talked a lot tonight. There's been a lot of numbers thrown around, there's been some crazy math going on up here. But with that, I think we have some ideas. I think the will of the board is to get at or under 80 million would be the objective. Would, would that be, would that be the consensus of the board, just by? So, I think Thursday, what we want to do is talk about the cuts based on what we've talked about tonight, where you feel that it's going to make the most operational sense for you. We want to talk about warrant articles, pick the ones we like, and then the ones we have to do as well. Make sure those are getting ready for primetime. We want to do that on Thursday. And do we see any reason why we can't put forth the operating budget at that time? Okay. So, at this point, that's the goal. So again, in, for, for full transparency, that's the goal. I think that, you know, when we're talking about consequences of cuts, I think that there's definitely a good education that can be had about more deep cuts and what they mean, and what, you know, what would happen at, you know, 1 million, 2 million, 5 million. You know, where, where we're at now, and, and, you know, because we keep getting that, you know, you're right, we do see some social media. I'm, I'm not saying we don't, we're not responding to it, so we don't create this inappropriate quorum, because it's not appropriate. But, but I would say is, we've seen some comments that things have gone up, let's take a look at what it looks like, but not, this is, it's not what we want to do, but I think it's, it's an educational exercise, but not a budget exercise, and I think maybe our next meeting would be the right place for that, next week. So, um, you were gonna?
Can I, do you mean, by next week, do you mean Thursday or Monday?
Uh, next week is Tuesday.
So, do you want that, you just talked about the deeper, deeper, deeper. Do you want that conversation, I'm sorry, yeah, on, do you want that on Thursday, the two days from now, which we can do? Or do you mean Tuesday, the board meeting, in that context?
I would say Tuesday, the board meeting, in that context, because I think the budget we want to put forth is at or around that 80 million dollar mark, and not 5 million more than that.
I don't, I don't think the board is telling you, I mean, it's mostly a, if you took a chainsaw, this is what the impact would be. I don't think any of us at the board table are, are advocating for that.
Not at all.
And I think we're looking to be mindful of the cuts that we make and try to make it meaningful, but mindful of what we're trying to do. I think we need to determine how, what we discuss beyond that, but I think, definitely not for tomorrow.
No, 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 Tuesday, Thursday. So Thursday, we just, we're looking at that 80 million, you know, ish mark.
And warrant articles.
And warrant articles. Tuesday, I think we'd love to talk about the education of it, and I think it really, you know, we had someone come to us and ask us at the beginning, and it's Mr. Adler, get on, get on our agenda and say, "I need to understand more about this budget, more the consequences of cuts." Well then, maybe this is a great opportunity to do that. So, it's not saying that's something we're going to do, as far as make those cuts, because we're not. I think we're gonna put forth roughly an 80 million dollar budget, based on how we, our exercise goes on Thursday. But let's say, you know, what's important to this community, what, what do we value? And if you value it, just know what you can't have when those cuts go deep. I think that's an important knowledge point, because again, I think the request from Mr. Adler was to learn. So let's teach, and I think, when it comes to the school district, no one enjoys teaching more than the school district, so you came to the right place. Brandy?
One cut that was discussed that I'm, I'm not really in favor of is the MMS field. And my reason is that while one could argue that it doesn't necessarily impact our learners, our learners also participate in sporting events that take place on that field. That field is utilized by the community as well as our students. And I have been on the receiving end of not being able to utilize that field, and since the work that is being proposed would need to be done anyway if that work were to fail, I would like to see us try and navigate that as best we can to keep it in the budget. And I know that I'm probably the minority on that one, but, I mean, if we have to cut it, it is what it is, but I would really love to see if we can try and find a way to keep it, because there's, in closing that field, the, the ripple effect is large. And while it's not necessarily large from an education standpoint, our students do need to expel their energy, and they, those fields are utilized across the board, so it would be a shame to not do what we can to support that as well.
And actually, I think, I'm just gonna correct one thing you said, that it doesn't affect our learners, and it does affect our PE program, so yes, it does. So absolutely. So, on that note, I think we have some thoughts? I think, I think you're ready? I, I, I'm, I'm hoping that it was, I mean, because it was kind of a process tonight. So on that note, I think we're looking at Thursday, going over final cuts, going over warrant articles, choosing the ones we want to bring forward, kind of cleaning that slate up, and then be able to bring it to the Budget Committee in time for their deliberations, which start the 23rd. So I think we're still in a good place to do that, but it's a hard work that happened over the last couple of weeks to do that. So Andy?
I just want to make a comment, I mean, what we've done tonight is not new. We do this every year, and I know people, a lot of people are watching for the first time, and, and, and I gotta be honest, I'm really happy people are paying attention. They may not agree with what we're doing, but at least they're visible to the process that we go through. And we do this every year. I was on the losing end of many votes last year, trying to really bring the budget down. But we try, we try to do cuts, we try to do, bring it down below. Not that you guys don't ask for meaningful things, but we always take what the proposed budget is and try to get it down to what we think is a meaningful level. So, this is, I, I always, these are always stressful meetings, but I enjoy them, because it allows us to really look and talk openly as a board, and I think it's important that everybody sees what we're doing, and that we're not frivolously trying to add things and spend money, because these are really hard decisions, especially when it comes to staffing and population. It's, it really weighs on you. Board members, people that are watching, I don't think realize the stress that board members go under, because the decisions you make not only impact taxpayers, but they impact students, families, and just a lot of different things. So it's, it's, this is hard, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that, Andy, and it is, this is very typical for us, to go through and, and invent cuts and come up with different cuts, because we don't, we think those cuts might be too difficult to, to have the student outcomes. And again, at the end of the day, we've done great work here as a board, I cannot thank our administration enough, because not only did they look at what they could sa, what they, what they needed, what they could sacrifice, but at the end of the day, they're still gonna own the expectation that we're gonna improve student outcomes year over year. And at the end of the day, we don't always make that easy. So, you know, these decisions don't make that easier, it always makes it harder. So thank you, thank you all, and thank your whole team, when you do meet with them, for, for all the work they did for this, because it was a lot, and I know it was a lot. So thank you. So with that, Thursday, we have a little more work to do, I think it's gonna be a little more efficient, we know, identify where a lot of the cuts can come from, I think some new ideas may come, but I think we want to get to the...
Now Thursday's at the high school, is that correct?
You're right, correct. Thursday's at the high school, because there's no room at the inn here. So, it will be at the high school in the cafeteria. So if you are new to the high school, it's not the door near the sign, it's the door near the sculpture. When you walk in, down the slope, the first large room on your right is the cafeteria, and we will be set up there. So, that, and that's where the Budget Committee meets. So Brandy?
Will we have the drafted warrant articles for Thursday?
That's the goal.
Okay. Are there any limitations to what we can, how we can market those, or the, the copy that we used, or that we can use relative to the warrant articles to help explain them to our taxpayers before they're presented as warrant articles?
Uh, there's warrant articles, there's, so how they're presented for the ballot is definitely DRA-driven, Department of Revenue Administration, very specific language. And I think that there's also the Voters' Guide, and we've always talked about refining that, to make it a better tool to understand the, what, what the, what's being asked of, of the ballot, and basically, you know, what goes into those numbers. So I think that, you know, as we're talking about refining the warrant, or the Voters' Guide, which of course is between when the warrant articles are presented, and when the, when the election happens in April, there's also, we have the books at deliberative session.
Right.
So it's, it will also, you know, the language that goes in there that explains them will help for deliberation as well.
See?
Is that something that we can post as well?
Sure, yeah, we, we post it, yeah.
By post, so post has a different meaning to me, like, we legally post meetings. You mean, like on?
Put it online.
Online, our website, that's what you mean by post.
Yeah, and I was also thinking at our schools, just so that there's transparency and clarity in what exactly is being said in our warrant articles. I know there was some confusion a few years back about exactly what the warrant article said, and sometimes the language used isn't necessarily clear, so it might be helpful just to sort of...
If I can comment? The language that's used is prescribed by the Department of Revenue Administration for a particular purpose. And the Voters' Guide hopefully helps clarify that. Now, when you use public funds and you're doing a Voters' Guide, you want to be really factual, and you just want to state what the warrant article is about, and what could happen if the warrant article fails and the tax impact. Unlike the world of politics, where you can say anything, whether it's based in fact or not, and more often than not, it's not, you can't use public funds to do that type of marketing. So you have to be honest, you have to be detailed, and you have to be truthful, and you have to just present the facts and sound neutral on it, but still get across the idea of, if this doesn't pass, this may hap, but you don't want to overdo it, because then you get in to problems with using public monies to do certain things.
I wasn't suggesting that we necessarily...
I know you weren't, but I just wanted to make a point.
Okay.
But to that, to that point, I know that we, for our Voters' Guide, have always tried to do this foldable thing that goes...
You don't like the foldable thing?
Well, I think there's, especially we have a nu, a number of warrant articles this year with details that we want the voters to understand. I think, here's where we might be able to take a little bit of a cue from the town of Merrimack there, they have more real estate of which to describe the warrant articles. So I, personally, I don't want to be limited to a single sheet of paper folded into three pieces and stuff, if it would help the voters to understand. So, that's my only comment there.
And I think that, you know, we've always talked about, if it made sense to combine, so there was one mailer going out, maybe, you know, have a different color coding, or whatever the case may be, so that way they know where the town ends and where the school begins, and that they are two different governing bodies that don't, one does not manage the other. Especially if people come from city governments, they don't understand, there's a distinct in, independent difference. So I think that, that would be something we've always talked about too. So, anything we can do to make it easier for the, for the voter to understand, I think is always a good thing, so. Cindy?
Well, and there's other things too, I mean, we can, there's our website, there's Facebook, and, you know, we've used those in the past, so we could continue to do those same types of things.
Absolutely. Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, we have a game plan for Thursday. It's, so I will entertain, we're not gonna entertain a motion, we have got to do public comments on agenda items, I'm so sorry. It's been another long night here. So, next is public comments on agenda items, if anyone would like to speak about tonight's deliberations, please state your name and address for the record. And apologies for almost forgetting, but I didn't.
Sorry, I've been sitting for so long, I'm...
We get it.
Tracy, Bull 5, Independence Drive. A couple of things I'd like to comment on, first is just contextual. The last time I spoke, I talked about being a part of the Master Plan Steering Committee that took place back in 2012, 2013, and again, for the record, I'll just state that that's an RSA-driven process that communities statewide have to go through every decade, so this will be coming up again in another two years. But we have a lot of new faces on the board that weren't here when I was a participant in that the last time, and regarding the whole campus plan and the whole issue of the SAU offices, I just wanted to lend context and say that it was the finding of that committee back in 2012 and 2013, that the SAU buildings, the, also known as the Green House and the Blue House, were given the poorest condition rating and the highest urgency of need of replacement, and, you know, that's not gonna go away. In terms of process, and Andy talked quite a bit about, you know, getting the word out to the community, I hope that the board will be very proactive in working with visibility with the planning board, because they aren't televised. We've addressed this issue in the past, so hopefully you will bring them forward and have lots of presentations along the way, when this becomes...
Can I just correct you, Planning and Building Committee? Planning Board is, yeah, School Planning and Building Committee, yeah, so, Planning Board is totally...
School Planning and Building Committee, sorry, it's late, I'm gonna make mistakes.
We get it.
The other thing I wanted to do was just extend my appreciation for the board in recognizing the importance of offering languages like Mandarin and Arabic. All three of my kids had very impactful experiences studying a variety of languages in high school, middle school, for my younger ones, even the upper elementary. I have an English, certified English educator, who studied Latin at Merrimack High School. Mandarin was not offered yet when my daughter was in high school, but she was part of the China Exchange Program, she went on to minor in Mandarin and studied abroad twice. My middle son, studying Arabic has been hugely impactful in his life. This opens doors that you can't begin to understand. Yes, college applications, student commendations, he was instrumental at his alma mater in helping work out cooperative professor sharing program between his alma mater and another nearby college. It was absolutely instrumental in his getting a Senate, a US Senator internship. And yes, there was occasion in that office where they used Arabic, or brought in translators, he was a participant in that. When employers post-college graduation can see that students have studied these languages, whether they've majored in them or not, students that have the intellectual dexterity to understand communication on an entirely different level than a Latin-based language are of the utmost appeal. I hope that we are keeping track of some of the students who have gone through these programs and bring them back in, so they, they can address students still in the system who might consider studying them. I don't know if you are, but I wholly encourage it, I know I have, two foreign language speakers who would, the other one's already subbed in the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Moore, Ford Depot Street. I have listened intently to the recommendations of the administration. I have followed closely your budget process, and all of the individuals that came before you, to speak about how their portion of the budget influences the overall interests of the school district. I'm afraid I'm not getting a very clear message from the school board about what it cherishes. A mixed message at best. And I will advise you now that if you adopt all the cuts that you have discussed here this evening, you will be advancing an imprudent budget with the consideration of the Budget Committee.
One more chance for public comment because we have one more member of the public. So I will close it with a, a personal decline. So we will close public comment and I will entertain motion to adjourn, made by everybody, but I'm going to give it to Brandy, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero. Thank you and good night.